Oh, are they getting some dispatches? I didn't know that. Good.
Yeah, they got sent to Arizona day before yesterday in the afternoon. They got all shipped out, so.
Okay.
Yeah. My next door neighbor came over to let me know he was leaving. He says, okay, now you guys gotta be safe because there's no firefighters in town. I'm going, well, no inbound firefighters, but you're right. We need to be safe.
Yeah, actually, the district crew just got back from Arizona, probably a week, week and a half ago.
Oh, okay, okay.
That rotation down there, too.
Okay, so how long is a rotation typically?
Um, two weeks, though. If it's really bad, they can't extend to 21, and they'll just do R and R, like one day R and R out there.
Oh, okay.
But usually it's two weeks, and they send them back to the home unit. So this year with COVID, we, we used to do two weeks, take two days R and R out there and do two more weeks, so turn into a three day rotation. I wouldn't be surprised if they're starting to do some of that, so they're not moving around the country as much.
Yeah, having to transport back and forth, you know, and just, I know I was down at the police department this morning, and I was talking to Michael, and she said that she was gonna go see her daughter because she had to go get a, she's a, a medical person, I guess. She had to go get a COVID test because she got exposed. She's not sick, but she got exposed. I'm going, oh my gosh, Michael! She goes, oh, no, 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 she's in the medical field. She has this happen all the time. It's like, oh, okay.
That's the reality.
Trying to limit that exposure has become a challenge, hasn't it?
Yep. You know, um, I don't know if you heard, we got the letter from the school district, I think, yesterday on their plan. Have you heard about that?
No, I have not. Did it go well?
Yeah, they don't have a plan yet. They gave us three different levels of what would happen. So the first is if they can send the kids back to school, that would be the intention.
Okay.
Uh, the second is they could do, um, kind of pods, so they try and keep families, uh, like kids will go to school two days, didn't say that, but that was my assumption. So they keep families where all, all the kids would be going to school on that day, and then classroom pods that would stick together, so those kids would go to and from school together, and then it sounded like online support. And then the third, if things aren't open, is to fully do a cellus, which is an online schooling platform, um, supported by the teachers, and, um, they did say they were working on wireless, uh, access
Good.
for the whole community. So, and I think what the, the letter said something along the lines of like, it's much easier to, um, shut things down than to open them up, so it sounded like they wanted to start with the, um, start at the level of the kids being in school, if that's permissible at that time.
Okay. Well, that's an interesting way to go about that, because it's like, so if you start at that higher level, the reason you would shut down is because you're seeing cases. Nah, that just doesn't sit well, but I get it, you know?
From talk I've heard, I think the middle one is what they're kind of aiming for. Uh, but I, I think it really, we'll see where things are in a month, uh, if the state even has.
I'm just so worried about the next two weeks with, with the funding running out and nothing in place, and what, what we're gonna see with folks. The stress level is just gonna go off the roof here, I think, in Oak Ridge. We've been pretty good, and, you know, like, we've acknowledged we have so many people that are already, had already been receiving some sort of assistance, so, or retired or whatever. But now that this is happening, I think we're gonna see, I was gonna talk to chief, actually, and see what kind of domestic response violence is gonna happen. I, I just anticipate a whole lot of, of, uh, stress going on.
Yesterday, did you see, when I saw people lining up for the, um, the food for Lain County, and it seemed like a pretty good line, I wonder if their count was up, if people are kind of thinking ahead on that one.
Yeah, I think so. Their count is up, and I've talked to some people who, who technically probably don't even need to be getting that food, uh, but since they don't ask, um, they are.
Yeah, and it's open for anybody. They're, they're not asking, it's just whoever.
Whoever thinks they need it. So it's like, and I think people are starting to think about, wow, I better, I better think about what I can get a hold of now and what's gonna happen. And, um, yeah. Starting to count their pennies a little bit more.
Yeah.
Um, I know Linda Cammer asked me about St. Vinnie's when they were gonna open, and is the laundromat open at all?
No.
So she was talking about that as far as, you know, what can we do maybe as a community, um, or is there a business, um, uh, opportunity there?
Yeah.
To get something open, because there's an awful lot of people that have relied on that laundromat.
It might actually, uh, help if the community asks collectively for, um, like, like, either from the city or chamber, uh, for St. Vinnie's to open, but I heard that they are working on a plan to open.
Okay.
I don't know if that, that was like definitely like fifth hand information, so.
Okay.
I went, um.
Well, I sent an email out to Gina just to see if she knew any information about it. She hasn't gotten back to me yet, but.
There, there was a thing a couple of weeks ago saying the laundromat was available by appointment.
Oh, okay. I didn't see that, John. Thank you.
There. Mm-mm. That'd be good to recirculate that.
And that they had, people had to sanitize the machines when they were done, and there was a whole list of requirements, but there was a, a contact information about setting up an appointment to utilize the, the laundromat.
Well, good for you. Do you know where you saw that, John? Do you remember?
Uh, on Facebook.
Okay, okay. Good.
One of the old announcement sections somewhere.
Uh-huh. All right.
That's the problem with Facebook. I mean, stuff gets shared, but those groups are member only groups.
Yes.
But maybe if the city could push something out, because you're public, so that might.
Yeah.
This isn't a member only thing, because I'm not a member of any member only.
Which, oh, but you saw.
We, I only associate with things that are open to everybody.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Well, that's good to know. Thanks, John. Um.
It might have been in the, like, the Oak Ridge events. I don't know.
Well, that's a member only group, though. You do have to subscribe to it.
The events one?
Yeah, or maybe it has a public facing, but I know I'm, I, I'm a member of it, so I can post to it, so maybe you can see it if you're not a member, but.
Yeah, I'll reach out to St. Vinnie's. If they've got a post that they're open, then we can push it through the city, too, to let folks know.
Okay, so I'm seeing we're one minute out, folks, and Kayla, let you kick things off when we're ready. Um, I'll repost that agenda. Seems like we have most people on.
All right, well, we're at 10. Um, so let's go ahead and get started. Thank you all again for joining us for another work session this week. Um, and we really appreciate all of the contributions last week, and are looking forward to getting some things whittled down and prioritized. Um, Brian, can you give me screen sharing permission?
Yep, once, once there.
Okay.
And Katie, before we get started, I do want to do a roll call of council.
Would you like to go ahead and do that now?
Sure, I can do that now. Um, so, uh, councillors, let's go through and make sure that we're all here. I'll go ahead and just call out names, and if you'll respond that you're present, that would be awesome. Um, uh, Don, councillor Kenyon?
Here.
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
Councillor McAllen?
Here.
Good morning. Um, councillor Whitney? Councillor Whitney said that she might be late. She had logged on and then had to, had to go take care of some things, so she may pop back in, in a little bit. Um, councillor Forcombe?
Here.
Councillor Hollitt? I don't see councillor Hollitt yet. Councillor, um, councillor Maxfield?
Good morning.
Good morning. I see Scott Hollitt's name here. Um, is that you, Chrissy?
It's me. Um, she had to run a quick errand. She should be on shortly.
Okay, sounds good. Sounds good. Have her, just have her announce herself when she gets in, um, that we will acknowledge her. Okay, we all seem to be present and accounted for, and we have, um, uh, city administrator Brian Ketchin, and what staff do we have available?
Let's see here. Um, police chief and sergeant from the PD are here, so Kevin and Michael.
Okay.
And Scott, so.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Go ahead, uh, um, and take it away, Katie.
Thanks, Kathy. Uh, did everybody receive the agenda? There should be a link to it in the chat, um, box. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen. Okay. Um, and just a few logistical items before we get started. A reminder to keep yourself muted, um, just as basic Zoom etiquette. And, um, if you are able to keep your video on, that's great. Um, have a piece of paper handy with a pen, so that you are able to write down ideas as they come up, so that we can make sure that we capture everything. Um, and like last week, we'll ask that you raise your hand in Zoom when you'd like to speak, so that we have an order and make sure that everybody gets an opportunity to speak. Um, and then also, if you could mute or silence, or silence your phone and refrain from using, um, other tabs on your computer as much as possible. Uh, let's go ahead and do a real quick round of introductions. I know that we've done the roll call, but just to make sure we know everybody on the facilitation team and, um, acknowledge everybody's roles, let's go ahead and do that. So, um, I'll call on individuals to introduce themselves. So Kathy, if you'd like to go first.
Kathy Holston, mayor.
All right, I have Kevin next.
Kevin Martin, police chief, and Michael wanted me to tell everyone she doesn't have audio, because I'm using the mic for hers.
Thank you very much. Um, I have Trudy next.
Hi, Trudy Hammond, Oak Ridge resident and committee member.
Thank you very much. Uh, John?
Uh, John McCollum, the city councillor.
Thank you. Paul?
Paul Forcombe, city council.
Tricia?
Hi, Tricia Maxfield, city councilwoman, and I'm gonna try my best today to put together coherent sentences.
Don? Did we lose Don?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, uh, I did lose connection for a minute. Are we doing introductions?
Yep.
I'm Dawn Kenyon, city councillor for almost one full year.
Um, all right, and is Bobby back on yet? Okay, looks like not yet. Um, Brian?
Brian Ketchin, city administrator.
All right, and then Chloe?
Chloe Simmons, city intern.
Leah?
SWFC intern.
Sarah?
Good morning, everybody. Sarah Ultimus Pope, um, coordinator for South Limit Solutions and Southern Mountain Forest Collaborative and on the facilitation team.
Great, and then I think Scott, I missed you.
Scott Hollitt, captain, Oak Ridge Fire Department.
All right, I think that's everybody. Uh, we're just waiting for Bobby and Chrissy to get back on. Did I miss anyone? All right, and I'm Katie Fields, working with, uh, South Limit Solutions on the facilitation team. All right, so let's go over the agenda, um, very briefly for today. So, um, we'll spend the first portion of today talking through the goals that came out of last week's discussion, as well as the pre-survey, and how we've kind of grouped those together, uh, based on the theme areas that we identified. And then we'll have a 30-minute lunch break, and then the afternoon, we'll be spending time working through the objectives that will be used to achieve those goals. And, and then we'll convene for the day after going over, um, a few next steps for what will happen with public outreach and getting comments on that. Um, so, moving on, um, last week, we established some ground rules, and so those are on the screen now as well. And, so we had some general ground rules, and then there were a few contributions from participants. So just to go over each of those, we asked that everyone, um, to be able to contribute to the best conversation that we can have today. Be present, participate, don't dominate, be concise, be open to new ideas, don't interrupt one another. When many want to speak, the facilitator will guide discussion, and today, for the morning session, that will be Sarah, and then in the afternoon, um, I'll be, I'll be doing that. Stay on topic, focus on the solution, not the problem, focus on the solution, not the person. There are no right or wrong answers or opinions. All are equal, and don't be afraid to share. Um, we also had covered a couple of definitions that we'll move forward with today as we continue this discussion in terms of what we're saying are goals, objectives, and metrics. Sarah, did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, and just a couple logistics things, um, and I just want to confirm with, uh, with probably Brian and the council. Um, we do have a member of the public on today. Uh, I think, I believe it will be just the council and city staff participating. Um, and I just wanted to confirm that's still the process, uh, just to clarify before we go into everything.
That was the, that was the plan, sir.
Okay, just so everybody knows. Um, and, uh, just any other questions or feedback, um, on goals before we move on? Okay, thank you.
So the definitions that we talked through last week, our goals being the big picture ideas, their answers to the questions of what the city hopes to achieve in the coming years, um, and fall under those common theme areas. The objectives are the specific steps taken to achieve those goals, and if we think of the goals as the answer to the what question, objectives can be thought of as how. Each goal will include a range of objectives that will be completed by specific people or departments over a set period of time. And objectives are tied to the implementation of what we're planning through the goals today and into the rest of this process. Metrics will be how objectives are measured, um, to show progress in achieving those objectives and goals. They show if and how objectives and goals are being met over the specified timeframe, and metrics are at the heart of the evaluation aspect of strategic planning. Each objective should have one or more corresponding metrics to be able to measure progress on implementation. Okay. So, as a reminder of where we are in the process, today, we're returning to the ideas that came out of our brainstorming session last week and the pre-survey. And our goal today is to reach agreement on language for each of the goals to send out to the public for prioritization. We'll send out a survey next week and reconvene once feedback comes in. And, so in order to save some time today and make sure that we are achieving that goal for the meeting, we took a look at all the priorities identified during the last meeting and during the pre-survey, and compared them to a bunch of different plans from other communities, um, to get at higher level goals as much as possible. And so this morning, we'll be focusing on the goals portion of the plan to be sure the city's priorities have been fully captured and that we didn't miss anything. And this will also be time to work through the wording for each goal. And we'll spend the last 20 minutes or so of this morning session making sure that these are the priorities before we move into the objective section, getting into more of the detail of how those will be accomplished. So last week's discussion fell into these four theme areas, and based on the discussion from the pre-survey and from last week, there are two to three priority areas and goals underneath each of these four themes. We looked at the strategic plans from other communities to develop some proposed wording for each goal, and so we'll go through each of those one at a time. Um, and first, we'll go over what the priorities were that came up last week. So under safe community, there were 17 responses between the pre-survey and the discussion last week that related to that theme area. Within responsive government, there were 27 comments that corresponded to basically what's generally having an open and transparent delivery of municipal services for what citizens want, need, and are willing to support. And there were nine mentions of providing municipal services, facilities, and infrastructure that support current and future needs in a fiscally responsible manner that ensures long-term financial stability. I just want to clarify, I'm going through these quickly, but we'll go through each of these individually. Right now, I'm just trying to capture how many times each of these came up during the discussion and the pre-survey. So, again, 17 under safe community, a total of 36 under responsive government. And then moving to strong economy, there were 14 comments about, um, improving living wage jobs, training, and education opportunities, and developing and marketing recreational tourism in a way that's beneficial to local businesses and residents. So a total of 18 under that strong economy section. And then within community vitality and livability, we had seven comments about working with community partners to increase opportunities for citizens and youth, and then three for finding creative ways to work with the public and private partners to increase access to housing, and seven comments related to opportunities to revitalize the city's business corridors and neighborhoods to provide a safe and beautiful place to live and work. So within community vitality, we have a total of 17 comments. All right, so let's go ahead and get into each of these in more detail. So under safe commu-
Katie, just remind folks that, uh, they can raise their hand, and I'll be monitoring that on the screen, um, if there's local people trying to talk at once.
Thanks. So, within the safe community theme, there were these two priority areas that came out of the discussion. And so for each of these theme areas, we'll show a screen like this, where we have priorities listed and then our proposed goal language. So the priorities for safe community, uh, that came out of the discussion were to improve community safety through partnerships, and then public safety. And we'll turn to that first priority, and now we'll open it up for discussion. Our proposal for what this language could be around safe community is to provide efficient, effective services for public safety. Does that capture what people are wanting with this goal, and are you, how do you feel about this language?
And maybe while people are thinking about it, I can explain kind of the process we went through, um, to achieve these goals, or, uh, to not, to draft goals. Um, we did talk about trying to lead everybody through a drafting process, but it's a pretty slow process when you're trying to do group drafting. So, um, we went through all the comments, tallied them, and kind of pulled them into these priority, um, uh, phrases, so it's public safety. And then looked through across a number of different plans, um, uh, looking for language, uh, for suggestions, and then kind of cobbled together from multiple, multiple different, uh, examples, what we thought would capture. So that's why we just showed you, um, a frame up of both goals that fell under this broader theme of, um, of safety. Um, and I think I'd add on this one with safe community. One of these goals is really about, uh, the, that's providing services is about how the city can do that, and then the second goal, um, uh, ensure safe community by collaborating to protect people, property, and the environment. How's that word collaborating? Because a lot of the discussion, uh, led itself towards working with other partners. So this first goal is the one that really is more around what the city services would deliver. If that helps, folks.
So this is Bobby. I just have one comment, and that is, um, I would like to see, I think the goal looks great, but I'm, it's, I'm kind of like self-sustaining, or, or something that shows that it's a sustainable, um, service for people. So like, what we're looking at now, of having to put out levies and really find creative ways to provide those services and having the cuts that we've had that impact this, like, for example, at the police department. Um, I think we need to really find ways to make that more sustainable, and I think it's important to have that as part of our goal. At least that's my opinion, and maybe this really is alluding to that, but, um, I think it's a, I think it needs to be stated somewhere, just so that people keep that in their mind, that that is something that we want to achieve.
So Bobby, if I'm hearing you correctly, are you saying that you think that having the word sustainable in this might be helpful for capturing ideas around, uh, making sure that this is something that can be maintained?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I clarify, Bobby, do you mean, um, like fiscal sustainability, so funding-wise, or are you thinking more people and services? And I just ask, because we do, um, in the responsive government, have a goal that brings in that fiscal responsibility or, uh, sustainability language. But, um, yeah, in this context, are you thinking more people, services, or are you thinking finances?
Um, I'm thinking both, actually, because, um, you know, I, I know that, um, the Cut Star Police Department are having a big impact on the community, and people aren't seeing that. Um, so I think, I really feel like it's a part of both. Because we need to maintain a level of, of public safety that really is effective, and, um, and that being sustainable is important to making that an effective service. So what we've just gone through, I think that's an example of what's made it less effective, and so I think that sustainability is, is important in both areas. And that's just my opinion. I don't know how everybody else feels about it, and I'm not married to having it here, but, um, I just, I feel like it's important.
Okay, so I see, um, Tricia up next with a comment.
Uh, this might be semantics, um, but I believe efficient and effective are synonymous, um, so there might be some redundancy there, and I don't know what we would change that to, but others can provide their input on language changes, I suppose.
Okay, great. Um, and just so you guys know, I am taking notes, uh, in another document, um, and I'll come back with me pulling these things together with the comments. So next, I see Kathy, and then John. Oh, John, maybe you put your hand, no, yes, it's up. Kathy, John, and then Dawn. So Kathy?
Um, yeah, I, I agree with you, Tricia. That's kind of what I was gonna say, too, is efficient and effective, um, could be synonymous, um, but perhaps we could, we could help incorporate some of what Bobby's concern was, and I'd like to talk about that, too, and by adding efficient, removing, removing effective, and, and doing efficient and sustainable services, um, for the public safety. But also, I think that intrinsic in all of these goals is the understanding, um, and stated goal in economic, that we have a budget that, um, will allow us to do this. Um, I think we could insert the sustainable budget aspect into anything that we talk about. Um, nothing can be done. So I'm okay with not specifically adding that, but, um, I do agree with Trish that we might be able to deepen the meaning of this goal by changing, um, one of the two words, efficient or effective, because I think they're one and the same.
Great, John.
Sorry about that. I have to remember which computer I'm working on. John, I saw your hand up.
Well, so if I understood what Bobby was saying, I, I agree with her. You know, as we went through the, the TSP thing, um, he really evident to me that there's a lot of the public doesn't really understand where we're at financially, I mean, the, the, throughout the idea, well, why don't we just put more place on the, you know, traffic enforcement? And that's just not realistic for our economic situation, and, and so if we're pushing this out to the public, I think we have to have something in there that says, you know, that the goal is to do something sustainable and, and not, because it's, it's, to me, it's kind of like we're sliding downhill with the ability to provide, you know, a lot of, uh, law enforcement services, and, um, we are at a point where we have to start prioritizing our law enforcement services to allow them to be effective, that, you know, the important things, and, um, anyway, I, I just kind of agree with Bobby that we need to, some sort of indicator that, you know, we're working on making this, um, financially sustainable.
So it seems like there's three comments saying that, uh, an edit, and let me know if this is correct, but an edit that read, "to provide effective, sustainable services for public safety," would, um, would more capture what you intend for this goal.
Sarah, if I might, I can't raise my hand, so I'll just raise it physically. Uh, you know, I think we could tie fiscal- You know, I think we could tie fiscal to almost any, any of these goals, just because that is the driving force right now. So maybe it makes more sense to put it in one place, and that would be under the government piece that, like you mentioned, and, and just talk about, hey, you know, we're in a tough place financially and, and continue to provide all services that the community needs. We'll have to work on a balanced budget. Otherwise, if, like I said, you could put financial clarifiers in each of these goals, and it would kind of make it, to me, it's better to focus on the goal of what you're, what you're looking at here as a safe community, and then put all the fiscal concerns into that one area of government.
Okay, great. I see Tricia's hand up next.
This is silly, but I do think I like the word efficient more than effective. And I, I kind of do like the idea of adding sustainable in there, because I don't necessarily think that that is tied to, I guess it is at the base tied to funding, but it could also just say, you know, making sure that we're, we're filling any availabilities and doing our best to retain volunteers or recruit volunteers. So, you know, I think putting in, provide effective and sustainable services for public safety isn't going to do a lot of harm. I do think obviously it is something that we could put in responsive government to kind of flesh out that vegetarian piece.
Okay, Trish, I might have just switched the language that you had initially, so if that was what I did, that's right. But are you saying just two then? So, so efficient and sustainable, or are you saying efficient, effective, and sustainable?
Oh, just efficient and sustainable.
Okay, so with that correction, does that still meet the intent? I do think like with that word sustainability, that could be, that could allude to fiscal, but that also could allude to, you know, what's your succession plan? And how do you bring more people into your different departments and stuff like that? So there's definitely a lot of ways that sustainable is a good word to describe your goal.
I would agree with that.
I agree as well.
I agree too.
Okay, I'm going to try something, and I'll let Katie take over from here, but I'm going to try and edit on this other page and see if it shows up here. It might not, but.
Great. Sarah, are you typing into the slide?
I'm going to try to and see if it shows. And as I'm doing this, if there's anyone who doesn't agree, I think now would be a good time to add anything. That's an interesting edit. I put in efficient, sustainable, and it's showing you guys, oh wait, no, it didn't. Okay, so just so you know, I have it on another screen, so we'll be able to bring these back to you later with the corrections in them. So you might have to do some hand notes.
I think, I think that it's a matter of my computer refreshing, and I think I'd have to navigate away from my screen so you wouldn't see the presentation. So we can, you know, we will have this in the version that we're working from in the afternoon. And so it looks like, were there any other comments about this goal? It seems like there's, there's general consensus about it, but just one last opportunity if there's any rewording. Alright. So the other goal underneath the safe community theme is this concept of improving community safety through partnerships. And the proposed language that we have for this one is to ensure, yes?
I just wanted to interrupt you for a minute and just acknowledge that Counselor Holliday is here now, and I'm glad that you're here, so that we all know that.
Thank you very much. So the proposed goal for improving safety, community safety through partnerships is to ensure a safe community by collaborating to protect people, property, and the environment.
And maybe what I'll add here is kind of what this goal did, is it pulled in ideas that you guys had about collaborating through your safety committee, working on some of the initiatives you have going on around air and some other things. So this is why we used kind of a similar goal, but use that word, so that partnership word. Just to throw it back to you guys, we are not, you know, this is just us trying to capture what you're thinking, so.
I think, I, I think it looks really good. I think the only thing I would consider adding is by collaborating, collaborating with community partners to protect people, property, and the environment. Because when I read it, I'm like, collaborating with who? So I think it's important to add, but just community partners. You know, we know there's a lot of those in a lot of different areas.
Okay, great. Thanks, Bobby. And I see Kathy has her hand up.
Yes, so interestingly enough, Bobby, that's kind of where, where I was going, but in a different direction when I looked at it. Looking at it in the terms that, you know, our law enforcement and our fire and EMS are primary, and they are collaborating with the community and, and other agencies. I had hoped that it would say, ensure a safe community, community. And I'm not sure how it goes, but I was thinking more in terms of the police and the fire, and that they would be collaborating with us, not that we all would be, be on the same level. Somehow acknowledging that, that, you know, we hire and put in place professionals to do that. And, but, but that's kind of maybe just where I'm coming from right now. And I'm willing to like totally not even go that direction. If anyone else has any thoughts about that, I'd love to hear it.
I see Tricia has her hand up.
I'm still trying to process exactly what Kathy was saying. I probably would have to ask a couple follow-up questions to fully understand kind of the thought there, but I think instead of adding more language, of course, I love the word collaborating, because I think that's really, it's a good buzzword, but I do think we could narrow down words by just putting partnering, by partnering to protect people, property, and environment. Because I think that could be within the city and without of the city structure. And then the only other comment I have, which will be a big debate, I'm sure, is Oxford comma after property. But I will, I won't lose any sleep over that one.
Yeah, maybe we should have the big debates over, over commas later. But thanks, Tricia. Okay, I did see Dawn had her head up, hand up next, and then Bobby after that.
Thank you. I was just thinking off of Kathy's comments, if I understood her correctly, that the fire department and the police department are us. So I don't really see us as collaborating with them. Is that, is that what you were saying, Kathy? Collaborating with police and fire?
Kathy, go ahead. I see you talking, but we don't hear you.
There. No, I, I don't, I don't, I was thinking it more as there's a community and then there's, there are professionals that are, that are the police and are the fire, that is their profession, and that, and that there is a bit of a hierarchy there. I want our police and our fire to partner, and I really like that word, to partner with us, with the community and the various agencies or the various committees. So they would be partnering with us. It is a directive to them to do that, as opposed to we're all on the same level. Because I, I actually don't think we are when it comes to public safety, because there's a professional level certifications, understanding, training, experience that, that they have that we don't. You know, so that's kind of where I was going from.
Oh, okay, my, my misunderstanding was, or, well, never mind. The police and the fire department are part of the city is, and I thought you were speaking about them as if they were separate entities. So never mind.
Kathy, just to help clarify a little bit further, and sorry, Bobby, I see you do have your hand up, but just so I have this as I'm taking some notes here. With that, with looking at through that lens, would you change the wording then, or would you abandon the goal or restructure the goal? Yeah, that might help clarify.
Well, I really like partnering instead of collaborating, and I agree with Tricia. I really like the word collaborating, but in this case, I think partnering is, is a better, is a better structure. And I don't know that I would change it. I think it needs to be recognized that that's important. I mean, we have, we have a hierarchy that is, that while shouldn't be carved in stone, should, should direct and, and help us with the flow of how we accomplish things, in all things, you know. So I, I guess what it is, is the city, the city isn't going to be collaborating with, the city, and I agree with you, Dawn, includes the fire and the police, obviously, that's the city, they're not separate. I guess maybe I just, it just doesn't feel right. It just, it doesn't flow right for me, but it might just be me. I may have had too many cranberries in coffee this morning, so that's okay. I can live with it, as I guess is what I'm saying. I can live with it.
It may be some of the objectives would help that resonate a little bit better, but let's not get into those details yet. I do want to acknowledge Bobby and John, and then Chief Martin.
This is Bobby. So my question was more along the lines of what Dawn asked. And so when I do see all of us as being one team, and I see what Kathy is talking about with the separation, but I've also set on a couple small community groups where having somebody from the city involved really helped with knowing what the city could do, because, for example, I was on, I've been on the ninety by thirty work group at, at one point, and can the city do, you know, there's all these questions of how the city can help and what can happen, where. And it's really nice if we keep that open to everybody within the city, being able to collaborate with our partners, because we just don't know what information we're going to need where, and I don't want, I would really like to just keep that broad and not really kind of pigeon it down to just the fire department and the police department.
Great, thanks. And we have John up, and then Chief, if you still had some comments.
Okay, it's me. I, I think you need to get rid of collaborating. I think it's too, I think the language is simpler and easier to understand if you put in partnering, partnering with the community, because the, the city does need to partner with the community. You need the communities, you know, buy-in and input, and you need, you know, you need their help to make the public safety things work, you know. Making that phone call when they see something suspicious, that maybe something can be stopped before it becomes something more. So I, I think you're partnering with the community, but you're also partnering with whatever other agencies to help provide the full extent of safety services. And, and you know, I don't think that those safety services just stop with police and fire. You know, I think safety services also go, get into some of the social services. It's a safety net for the people to be able to live a, you know, a decent life and whatnot. And so I think that's also part of making a safe community with the, the social services. So I, I really think we need to be, to simplify it by getting rid of collaborating and replace that with partnering with the community and other agencies to protect the people, property, and the environment.
Okay, great. I, yeah, I wish we had a better edit in real time. I do have that in there right now, just how you read it, John, as proposed language. Okay, so Chief Martin, and then thoughts on that edit, since we've heard that several times now from folks.
Well, I don't know where this comes in clearly, but part of it goes back to what the mayor said. I think part of this is the council and the mayor would direct the city administrator, and then on down to the departments of what our mission is, or what prior, how, how the, the council and the mayor wants us to prioritize our missions. Because you, sometimes your priorities might be a little different than the priorities in my head, and that way we could get on the same line. I think I alluded that to last time, is kind of what our core mission is, our core mission, but then what you want our side missions to be and how you want us to prioritize that. And that would be more of a direction rather than a partnership. And then all the partnerships could include people, and is the partnerships with different agencies from social services, other law enforcement, other fire, that type of thing. But the, the core part of that is, is the, the mission being directed down to the city administrator, to the department heads, and then to the departments. And that's kind of what the council wants as a mission. That's kind of what I've been looking for the whole time I've been in Oak Ridge. What is our city mission? You know, and it's different depending on the agency, or the department, rather.
Okay, great. And just so you know, Chief, we did try and capture that in the responsive government a little bit clearer. But I think that's a really important reminder for all of these goals as the council's building them out. So thoughts on either what Chief Martin just added, or on that edit? And yeah, I think that's all I have for you guys right now. And maybe it would help a little bit as, sorry, our screen just changed. I'm trying to figure out, get back to where I was looking at. So when we have the, the two goals under community safety, or safe community, so this one, it's now editing to ensure a safe community by partnering to protect people, property, and the environment. And then the second goal would be provide efficient, sustainable services for public safety. As I was pulling in all the different comments and priorities that you guys had, I really thought of that first one as these partnerships, such as ideas came up around creating and working through your safety committee, creating a neighborhood watch program, or promoting a neighborhood watch program, increasing access to mental health and social services, and then becoming a model community for emergency preparedness, wildfire and smoke risk reduction. Those all fit in that first lane, and where the second lane is really more the, the direct things that the city can do through its departments and funding mechanisms. That was just how things were organizing in my head, so it doesn't have to be that way by any means. I'm not seeing any more hands. Any thoughts or maybe thumbs up, thumbs down on the edit then? Okay, I see a thumbs up. Okay, you guys, it's going to turn in one of those silence equals consent. I see one thumbs up. If you're trying to find the thumbs, that's okay. That's also down in reactions. There you go, another one. Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
I'm wondering if, does everybody have access to the same place where you would raise your hand, to the yes and no buttons? Does everybody have those? Because you can vote yes and no if you have those options, and that might be an easier way to capture that.
Okay, the yes and no then is in the bottom of the participant list where your raised hand is. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, cool.
Can you read the, the language updates one more time?
Okay, so how I have it right now is ensure a safe community by partnering to protect people, property, and the environment.
And I'm seeing yeses from John. And I'm seeing yeses from John, Dawn, Paul and Tricia. I'm seeing no nos. All right, now I also see Bobby, Chrissy. I think that's it. All yeses.
Okay. Great, I think that means we've captured that one.
Katie, can you not see my yes? Did I not do that?
Kathy, I saw it pop on and pop off. So I don't know if these stay for a little while or, or not.
I see it now.
Okay, I'll take it off now.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and move into the responsive government theme area. So these are the two goal areas that fell underneath responsive government. So with the priorities that came out of discussion relating to improving working relationships between city officials, staff and citizens, and then meeting city infrastructure needs now and into the future. So with that first improving working relationships priority area, the proposed goal that we have for that is in an open and transparent manner, effectively deliver municipal services that citizens need, want and are willing to support.
Hold on a minute.
And maybe because this frame up seems to kind of help folks understand the organization. But in this, the open and transparent manner kind of gets at the discussions that we had around city communications. And then also effectively deliver services that people want and are willing to support. Getting, gets to the leveraging volunteer time wisely and how you direct your committees. And then also under this one, we folded under with the open and transparent and effective delivery. We folded in the modernizing city guiding documents, policies and procedures and all the discussion around that. Does that help with that frame up, you guys?
Yes.
Sorry, Dawn, I just saw your hand up.
Thank you. I wanted to know if you could clarify municipal services. Are you referring to police, fire and water? Or police EMS, fire and water?
I think that's how, how you guys end up expressing your objectives. So we definitely in the, the second goal under this theme area that has the, just the language around fiscal responsibility. We added in the funding for emergency services because there was a lot of discussion around that. So that was kind of under that column. And investing in city infrastructure, but it doesn't mean it couldn't fit here. It's just with the priorities that you guys had described before and that's how we organize them out.
I guess I'm, I'm specifically asking if you could define what municipal services means in this sentence?
In, in this one, it was really more about communicate, you know, and that might be something we need a wordsmith actually, Dawn. So I think it's more, I want to push it back to you guys. I don't want to be explaining to you how I organize things. I want to push it back to you of like, how would this resonate with you and would it need to be changed? Okay, I saw Tricia pop up and then Bobby and then Kathy.
So the way I read it is anything that we as a city are funding is municipal services. So that's our police services, our water, all of the above, anything we have a fund for is my understanding.
So this is Bobby. That, that is mine as well. Because when I think human, when I think of municipal services, I think of municipalities and Oak Ridge is a municipality. So I see that as anything that we cover just as exactly as Tricia said it.
Okay, and then Kathy, you had your hand up and then John has his hand up?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, so the definition of municipal is, is of or relating to a town or city or its local government. So I think that's a valid question, you know, because some people here municipal and I think maybe Dawn did it and say, well, that's the government. Other peoples here municipal and go, well, anything that my city provides is municipal. And I'm fine with the word municipal, but if it, if it isn't as clear as it should be and we need to make that a little more succinct, I'm, I'm good with that too. To deliver city services that citizens need would do the same thing and maybe a clearer manner, so.
Okay, great. I did see John put his hand down and Dawn, yours is still up. Did you have a go back?
Yeah, I took it down for a second and put it back up. I didn't know if you caught that. Um, so I guess maybe what I'm concerned about with this statement is the last part, what it says and are willing to support because municipal services in my mind are city services, which you know, would be police, fire, ambulance, water, sewer, those kinds of things. And so it throws me off saying are willing to support because the citizens do support all those services through their, their taxes and you know, a large variety of community. We have a lot of community support that has nothing to do with city stuff, just people helping people. But so I think it's obvious that people are willing to support those things. I'm just not sure why that, why that would say that.
I'll try and clarify here and I think this is where you guys can help. I was trying to capture a nugget of what you guys talked about, about how you staff out your committees. So I was trying to organize that and there's somewhere which those things you really do need. You need your partners and you need your volunteers and whatnot. So there probably isn't a better way to say that. And Kathy just added perhaps support financially. So maybe that's, that gets at your taxes and how you want your taxes funded. But yeah, that's what I was trying to say there. But maybe Dawn, maybe that needs to come off or it needs to be said in a different way. So I do see John and then Kathy have their hands up.
Okay, I had put my hand down because I thought I was going to get to talk earlier. Anyway, when, when I read municipal services, I, I think of everything. I think of going in and getting a building permit application and filled out and sit. I mean, that's a service that they provide. And I appreciate when it's done effectively and, and whatnot. You know, so I think municipal services covers everything the city does from, from police and fire to roads to mowing the grass in the park. I mean, that's a municipal service. Maintaining the parks, the, like I said, the processing the paperwork for my building permit. I do kind of stumble around the are willing to support. And maybe it's, you know, Kathy threw out support financially, but maybe it, that needs to be clarified is into what kind of support you're talking about. They don't really have a choice about their taxes. I mean, that's kind of just a given and, and it comes out and, you know, they don't get to decide whether they do their taxes or don't do their taxes, I guess for the most part. But maybe it's willing to support through involvement or willing to support through actions or, you know, something of that nature. Because if you're trying to capture the idea of getting them to support it by participating in community or committees or by volunteering for some sort of community service project. I kind of look at that as supporting it through their actions or supporting it through their involvement. So willing to support through community involvement, maybe, I don't know.
Okay, great, great, thank you. We had Kathy, you have your hand up and then Bobby.
Yeah, I, you know, given, you know, given what we've just gone through, I can understand why we want to make sure that it's something that the community is willing to support. But then that therein lies and lies a, a built in track, in my opinion, because it's, you know, are you asking what do you want and what will you support? Or this is what I think you need, will you support this? It goes both ways. Many, many of the services we provide, we, we just provide. And, and we would hope that the community, such as the planning and all that supports that because that creates a community that is, that is well thought out. But you're going to provide that. So the willing to support, given, given, you know, where we are right now in this community, really the goal of this responsive government isn't so much to define what all those municipal services is. The goal is to, is to define the interaction between, between municipality and citizens. And you could, you could kind of say they're one and the same, but they're not. So it's, it's the relationship that is the big concern here of a responsive government. Not so much, you know, what are the specific services? So if the summary says to improve a working relationship and how do you work? How do you improve that? I think you just improve, you improve that by, by ensuring open and transparent processes in anything we do. That's, you know, there isn't, because I, I fear that with this statement, we'll get into this, well, who supports this, who supports that? You know, how do you define support? How do you, you know, how do you quantify that in, in a community? Who cares, you know, whether it's a 10 inch pipe or a 12 inch pipe for your sewer? Well, a few people might care because they may have some expertise, but really you're going to support that. So I think concentrating on the relationship is what this goal needs to do. Not the services and not even the financial support, John, you're right. And Dawn, you're right too, because there's many ways we support our community that, that are go above and beyond just the financial aspect of it.
Kathy, I think that was a really helpful summary in thinking about how to approach this goal. And I saw a couple, so Bobby's hand's been up for a bit and then Tricia's hands, hand just came up. I'm trying to take notes here. I really wish we were working in real time. So I'm going to ask you, Katie, can you see about pulling up a screen where we can actually wordsmith this one? Because it seems like it might need some edits. Okay, so passing it off to Bobby.
I think I disagree with Kathy a little bit. I think just, sorry, with it gone, I can't read it. We're just taking out, are willing to, then leaving the word support. And I think if we think back to the TSP and support, that's a really big example of how the community wasn't supportive of one portion of the TSP. And she's right in that there's a lot of ways that there's that support piece. But I think the word supported is defined in a lot of different ways throughout our community. And then some of that, even us in our work group here, no response is basically agreeing, you know? So there's different ways that it's there, but I think including it is very important because it acknowledges that we value our community and we value their support and what we're doing. And these goals are for our community, they're for all of us and not just specific to us individually on council. So I just, I really feel that support is very important to include. And I do understand what Dawn was saying about how it was, the wording was a bit confusing. But I, I feel, I feel that it's just important to keep it.
Okay, so I'm going to just capture, read back to you guys a couple of things that I have right now. And then I see Tricia up. So one option is to, okay, first there's an option around municipal services. Maybe that needs to be changed, the city services or described a different way. And then Kathy's, what I wrote down from what you were saying Kathy is maybe the goal needs to be something more along the lines of in an open and transparent manner, effectively deliver services whichever way that's described. And then Bobby, with what you just said, the edit would be in an open, transparent manner, effectively deliver municipal services that citizens need, want and support. So those are the options out there. Okay, I'm seeing some nods. And Trish, I'm going to pass it off to you.
So kind of what I've came up with just for language change again, I was kind of working on this before that screen disappeared, but effectively deliver municipal services in an open and transparent manner. And I think what we'll hit on once we get down into those objectives and metrics is, is how the community engages with that and supports it through voluntary actions or, you know, whatever that support may, may look like. But that's just my two cents.
Okay, we are, I'm not seeing other hands right now, though Bobby, yours is still up. So did you have a go back? No, okay, so we are working on pulling up a.
I do have one comment, Sarah.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, last month, actually, council passed a resolution which actually says that we certified that we did provide specific municipal services. And that's police, fire, streets, sanitary, storm sewers, planning, zoning and water utility. So it is kind of defined.
Okay, that's really helpful to know then. So if this goal is thinking broader than just that, then a word change would be appropriate.
Sarah, I, I like what you, what you said, the effective, effectively deliver municipal services in an open and transparent manner. But I agree that maybe then we should change a municipal to city, I guess. I don't know if that, I, I just think they're one and the same. You know, and Brian's point that we, you know, we, we did in a sense through resolution define, define what municipal services are that we provide. But they are much bigger than that. And, you know, Bobby alludes to that frequently about, you know, the social aspects of that, the social services, you know, the community involvement. That is, is a broader, a broader circle than just municipal. But I think, you know, I really think the important thing here is to concentrate on what is, what is our relationship? What is the relationship between, between the city? And that includes council, administration, departments and the community. You know, how, how does that, how is that strengthened? And and how do we nurture that?
Okay, good. So I'm going to, are you guys able to see my sticky now? I'm going to rewrite this. I just got to get where I can see.
I think she started out with effectively delivers their services. Isn't that what Tricia started with now?
Oh, I've just seen that now. Too many different things to see. Okay, so Tricia's chat, okay.
You guys were definitely right about the drafting part being a monster to do as a group. So thank you for providing a template for us to work off of.
And then were we going, Kathy, I was trying to move things around as you were talking. So was there going to be a change to municipal services?
I think if we can come up with and agree to something that is broader than municipal, I think might, it might be helpful or agree that municipal actually does fit what we want it to. As long as we agree on whatever that term is and what it means and that it's not so nuanced that a future council and a future mayor and a future city administrator looks at it and goes, what the heck are they talking about? I think it's okay.
Yeah, I think that's good. Now I'll add in here that the second goal that we haven't gotten to yet does again refer to municipal services and facilities and infrastructure and about the fiscal language. But that really, the objectives about it really are about those city services, like what Brian read out that you guys passed on that, that language. So maybe it would be really helpful in this one too. So maybe it would be really helpful in this one to either use different wording or make it more broad. And then if it helps you, again, this, this goal is where we're trying to nest those objectives around improving consistency and reliability of city communications, volunteer, or leverage volunteer time wisely with your groups, and modernizing city guiding documents, policies, and procedures. So that's where we talked about the codifying city ordinances and charter work and whatnot. So, and that really would be maybe, with your current definition, much broader than municipal services.
And I see that Dawn's hand is raised.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that I, I wasn't really hung up on the, on the word municipal. I wanted to make sure that, that the intention of that being in the same line with community willing to support wasn't that the community should financially support it more. I wanted to be sure that it was clear that we weren't asking for more money for all the services we currently provide. So that was my only reason for bringing that up.
Yeah, and I think that's really helpful, Dawn. I think that's helped us get, get to here, which I think is sitting better. So I'll try putting city in there and see what you guys think. But I don't know if there's another way to talk about how, how the city, how, how you're making a goal out of transparency and working as far as this is like, so this, the thing is the city has control over. Because remember, our two, first two themes are really where the city has direct control. And the second two themes are a lot of those partnerships and, and supporting other people's initiatives. So I think I'm getting lost, but I don't know, service is really the right, the right word. Yeah.
I do wonder, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, Trish.
I do wonder if, you know, maybe we could put this in the parking lot. And then as we go through those objectives, kind of see if it still rings true. Because I do think if we really wanted to make it broad, we could just say services. Not even spell it out, but I think it'll be helpful to see some of those objectives.
Yeah, that's probably a good call, Trish. It might help too, after seeing the next school and talking through that one. Should I leave the word city in there for now? Because that was my most recent edit.
I have a comment, Sarah, on this. I think it's important, that word, because municipal or city, because if you look at the things that are in the resolution, those, as I, you know, get tax revenue from the citizens, those are the core things that I am going to never stop doing. The great stuff that Bobby talks about and really makes a healthy community is things that happen after those services are supported. But if revenue isn't there, those things don't get done. So I think there is a way to think about this, that, that, you know, those core things are kind of my mandate to do with tax dollars. If we have extra revenue through other means, then the other things that are nice to have come, come with them. So that's just my thought.
I think that's a really important point, Brian, to, you know, there, there are some things that come first on the top checkboxes. And then what money you have left over, you apply to the rest. But as a goal, we want to be able to apply our monies in a way that serves our community the best. And I think it goes without saying that we know that the water in the sewer and are, and keeping the lights on effectively is the first thing we always do. I'm, I'm cool with doing what Tricia said, setting this aside and, and going back and look. That way, we can look at the second half and make sure that what we are really looking at is, is, is communicating what we want. Because I'm looking at this going, this is more about relationship and not about what services we're keeping on. But I think as we move into the next, next half of this, we might, it might define the first half better too. I think I lost everybody.
And sorry, I'm just trying to pull up the PowerPoint so we can get back to that. Because now that Katie's tracking who is talking, so let me see.
I got it pulled up, is, are people able to see that?
Oh, good, okay, good.
Okay, so this is the second goal now. For the summary of the priority, it was meeting city infrastructure needs now and into the future. And the initial proposed language that we have for this one is provide municipal services, facilities, and infrastructure that support current and future needs in a responsible fiscal manner that provides for long-term financial stability.
Oh, and I'm seeing that we missed an edit in there that we put into. So that last manner that ensures for long-term fiscal stability is what we have right now. So just so you guys know, these are things that we were working with all week too, going back multiple times.
I'm sorry, Sarah, what did you, what is it that you said you missed? I mean, as I'm writing this down.
This was one of our earlier drafts, there's two provides in there. So we changed that provided in the last line to ensure.
Thank you.
And maybe we should switch over, we can just copy and paste this into the notes and start wordsmithing from there. So I can stop sharing if you want to start sharing, Sarah.
While you're doing that, I think, given the last goal, I think if you just remove the services part of it, because we're talking about, we've already talked about services, this is actually talking about brick and mortar. And so if we just said provide infrastructure that does that, instead of serve, community, serve municipal services.
I see Bobby's hand raised. Bobby, you're muted.
There we go. I like this one. And I agree with what Brian just said, I think that's, that's appropriate.
Is it going to come back up on the screen?
Yeah, sorry, I'm trying to carry things over and of course, of course, my, it's just fonts and whatever else. Let me, let me try and get this up right now. Just re-typing it. Oh, let me copy and paste.
I'll just go ahead and have the slightly older version pulled up until we're able to take a look at that. The newer version, just so everybody has it in front of them. And we can make some comments about that, if anyone had any other initial thoughts.
You know, Katie, one thing that might work is if you just take off, if you go off of screen share and just show your PowerPoint, we could edit in there real time.
Okay.
The sticky thing going back and forth is kind of a little bit hard.
Yeah.
And then I'll go back to watching folks for hands.
So. Well, I think she meant to keep the screen up, but maybe go more into the editing versus the.
Yeah. One second, I just see they get it. Sorry, one second. I apologize for the delay there.
And maybe it will help you guys, as we're waiting for this to come up, I can tell you the things that, the objectives that we nested under this one were the stabilized funding for emergency services. And that did nest in both fire EMS and police, and then invest in city infrastructure where needed, which had a lot of other tasks, tasks that fell under that. So, oh, go ahead, Kathy.
Perhaps I'm just, I'm, I'm not getting this. But, but these two goals, I mean, they are, they are intertwined, but they really speak to different, two different things to me. One, one speaks to relationship, and one speaks to the specifics of, of balancing our services with our budget. One is, is the relationship that we have, establishing that trust, and then saying, and we will make sure that any services that we provide come out of a balanced budget.
And that's what we heard from, from you guys. And so maybe this all fits under one, it would just be a lot. So, but that, those were really the kind of the two big priority areas we're hearing coming out of discussion around this.
Okay, good, good. Then I'm, then I am on the right track. Okay, got it.
Now, on the edit, Katie, I, did I hear Brian say correctly that take out this, the municipal services, take out the word services? Is that what Brian said?
My comment was, the last goal talks about services, delivering services. This goal is, at least I think it is, is about the brick and mortar infrastructure of the city and maintaining that infrastructure. So I would suggest we take out everything from municipal all the way to, through, you could just say, provide infrastructure. And then the rest of it.
Well, it wasn't just infrastructure though, unless you're considering how, like, the funding, effectively funding, not effectively, but the fiscal responsive funding around fire EMS and police, that was nested under there as well.
Well, then I'm, I guess I'm, the summary kind of leads me astray because it says meet city infrastructure needs. So I, maybe I'm wrong, we're not talking about just about brick and mortar and maintaining a sewer and water system. And overall, financial stability obviously would encompass everything, but, so I guess.
You know what, you are, you're totally right, Brian. Initially, we had that fiscal language under the safe community. The discussion you guys just had of whether it should be under that. And then we ended up pulling it over here, realizing that the, really the only language around the, we like the fiscal responsive language, ended up pulling the funding discussion around EMS services here. So you're right, you're not seeing it in the summary. So that's, and, and we have a note to ourselves actually to tell you guys that we were struggling with that in the drafting of where to talk about the financial funding of those.
Perhaps it needs to be a standalone goal that talks about money management, fiscal, balanced budget, fiscal responsibility, I don't know.
I definitely think that's, it couldn't help. And it's very important to you guys right now, I did hear a lot of that, so.
So I'm just creating a new slide as a possible other goal area, and maybe that's where this gets captured. That's what, from what I'm hearing, that we need to maybe think about creating this as a separate goal. Do we want to try to craft some language around that? Or try to modify the infrastructure goal first?
Oh, and I'm supposed to be shaking hands now, sorry, Trish. Trish, John, and then Kathy.
Okay, so, again, I think seeing these objectives for kind of what you guys have parsed out is going to be really, really helpful. Because on that first goal, I do think that we could maybe change that to effectively deliver community services if it's talking more about those community, or, yeah, community committees, trying to partner. I'm not even sure it would really help with those objectives. And then secondly, I do think that we could, down below, just, and again, it's going to be dependent on those objectives. For the second goal is provide services, or provide municipal facilities and infrastructure that support current and future needs. But I guess it really, again, depends on those objectives.
So, yeah, you know what, maybe it would, it sure helped us with our real-time editing too, to show you guys that stuff. We just don't want to really get into the objective discussion. But I know when we were trying to craft, we really needed to see those to know how things would be organized. Should we switch to that window and show you that as we think? And then easily in that window, we can add that third goal in. Would that be helpful? I mean, this is your guys' process, so we need to be doing this in a way that's helping you guys work.
I think, Sarah, it might make sense for us to just table responsive government until we get down to those objectives. That way, we're not throwing a hitch in the whole process. And maybe we can actually get through those other goals a little bit quicker.
Okay, yeah, we can come back to this one, okay. Let's do that. Before we do that, we, I really should recognize, we had John, Kathy, and Dawn. Knowing that maybe we should table this and move on, do you guys have anything you want to add before we do that? So first, John, then Kathy, then Dawn. I'm not hearing anything, so, all right.
Take your hands down.
Am I, am I speaking?
Oh, yeah, go ahead, John.
I had, I had my spacebar down, apparently that's not working. I, I thought Kathy made a great point in the fact that when we looked at the first goal, I thought it was more about the relationships and how the city interacted. And the second goal, it, it's more about being able to provide the services and facilities and maintain the infrastructure in the fiscally responsible. And it seems like a whole different topic to me, which I think is great. One's the dealing with them in an open and transparent way, and the other one is about providing it all in a way that's financially responsible because the city hasn't had a great track record of that in the past, so.
Okay, thank you. And, so do anyone else still have their hands up?
Yeah, I do, Sarah, I'm Dawn.
Go ahead.
This is probably going to throw a wringer in the whole thing, but me, both of these actually read like things. And, and I agree with what everyone else is sort of describing as their definition of these two goals, just to clarify, but to me, these are things that the shit, that, oh, sorry, the city, it, it shouldn't need to be spelled out. That's, these are, these are things that we should be doing, period. So it strikes me as odd that we would have a goal to do what we should already be doing. Being, you know, fiscally responsible and that kind of thing.
Point taken, Dawn, but if it, if it helps you to, to hear that a lot of other plans have this language in there too. So maybe it's a little bit looking at where you've been and where you want to go, and knowing that hats might change, and people and roles might change. But yeah, I think you're right, a lot of these are given and to be expected. But we do see them coming up in plan after plan as well. So it is things that city has struggled with, so obviously other cities struggle with as well.
Okay.
And the objectives might look a little different on how we get to that goal.
Right. Right, Kathy's is hard, so not going to be able to talk.
Yeah, it would really be nice if we were sitting in one room with a flip chart, huh?
Oh, and I didn't even realize I wasn't on mute, but it's really, it's hard not to, to be able to respond and, and say, yeah, good job, I agree with you.
Yeah, we really appreciate you guys.
I mute myself now.
As we're figuring, figuring out how to do this remotely and organize how to, to help you guys think around wordsmithing. This is hard stuff. Okay, so.
All right.
Oh, go ahead, yeah, go ahead, Katie.
So it sounds like we're going to table the discussion on responsive government to move through the other goals, and then we'll come back to that. So I'll go ahead and click on the slide that's for the two different priorities under that, under the strong economy. So the major priorities that emerged were increasing living wage jobs and growing the local tourism industry. And the suggested goals around those, the first is improve the city's economy by focusing on increasing living wage, jobs, training, and education opportunities for overage residents. And the second is to sustainably develop and market the recreational tourism industry in a way that benefits local business and residents. Oh, and I'm getting a comment from Kathy that the screen is too small to see. I'm wondering if I switch to the next slide, is that more visible? We can just work at them one at a time, does that work, Kathy? Or is that still too small?
I think it's just how, it, it's, it's just smaller, is, do you, do you have your view on full screen? Interesting, okay. Let me see if I can just. It's because you're in the editing mode.
Yeah.
There you go, that'll do it. There you go, that'll do it.
I'm trying to make it larger and it's making it smaller.
Yeah, it's just being in the editing mode, so this is us trying to be able to edit in real.
Okay, okay, all right, I'll put on my stronger glasses.
And maybe as a frame up, as you guys are thinking about this, I'm not seeing any hands right away. So in this responsive government, this first goal, looking at other examples, I did pull in a few other words because this, this captures the conversations that you guys were having around youth enrichment opportunities, access to childcare and and a general objective that was around infrastructure, that's more that, infrastructure that is, and facilities that are, you know, more around the community livability, so that get to your parks and those type of things, so. Wait, are we on economy? Did I go too far ahead?
We're on economy.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay, so yes, on this one too, I also did the same thing, so living wage jobs, oh, training, I added in training and education. But we did have a lot of discussion around jobs being important. So under this one, the, that language around assisting businesses to grow or recruiting new businesses, filling the OIP, and those were basically the two main objectives under that one. And again, through partnerships, yep.
I don't, I don't mean to be obtuse here, but I don't understand the whole training and education opportunities for Oak Ridge residents, are we talking? I mean, I understand how that can be a part of it, but as far as this is a strong economy, a strong, those, those are things that we may have to do because I mean, I'm confused how that, how that works in here, is that the city's responsibility to do training?
So these are through partnerships, I really, it's so hard to do this without showing you guys objectives. So these are through partnerships and so that's where, under that, grow existing businesses and recruit new, new businesses. The ways you guys are doing that right now is through RAIN. And RAIN offers trainings and education for business owners on how to expand their businesses. So that's what I was trying to capture there is, is continuing those initiatives or making those initiatives a priority that are delivering those things.
I think it's dangerous to have that in there like that, because I mean, yes, we partners, we work with other partners, like, I get those, that your other notes do that. But this kind of, kind of boxes you into, this is the city's responsibility, it isn't. It's the city's responsibility to partner with others to provide this.
So this is Bobby, I, I actually like the wording because yes, it is our responsibility to partner with others. But as we support others such as St. Vincent de Paul, they do a lot of training and work with a lot of other social service agencies that help increase people's ability to find living wage jobs. So I think, I think it's important that we recognize that we need to support those opportunities within our community. So just the things that we did with St. Vincent de Paul and working with them really lends itself to this as well as the RAIN example. I understand it, but I do see where you're coming from as to how it was, how it's a little confusing as to why it's there. Because my first read, I kind of felt that way and then I thought about, like, no, these other pieces really aren't what I think that means, so.
Yeah, you know Bobby, I don't disagree with you, but, but I, but I really specifically don't want to put the city in a position of saying, this is our job to do that. It is our job to partner with others who do that, you know, because there, semantics is important in this to me. I don't, we absolutely need to be looking for opportunities that will benefit our community, no matter what they are. But we, there are many things that we will not provide, it isn't our job as a city to do that, it's our job.
But the goal doesn't, the goal wasn't saying that, it says the city's economy by focusing on ways to increase, it doesn't say provide.
No.
It says ways to increase.
But it says focusing, oh, well, I guess you could look at it that way, you could look at it that way Bobby, you're right. Focusing on ways to increase to me says that the city is going to focus on doing that. Like focusing on ways to improve our roads means we're going to improve our roads as opposed to partnering with, with focusing on partners or partnering to, with others to increase, to do the training and education. We absolutely should be looking at increasing economic living wage jobs. But that may or may not include training and education opportunities. I'm not sure I'd want that in a goal, but I, I understand where you're coming from though Bobby, absolutely I do.
And I'll add in here, so for all these goals, for the next two, strong economy and community livability, those were the ones we had already talked about, those are through partnerships. So I did not put that partnering language in every goal, because I anticipate the plan describing that before that section. But to take your point Kathy, it might be that we need to clearly express that through every goal. So, and I do see Trish has her hand raised.
I really like the language change that Katie put into that document, I think that takes a lot of the ambiguity out of it. So I would be in favor of adding in that language as well. And maybe after, when we go and read through the plan as a draft, we can say, we can clearly outline and say, okay, maybe we don't need to have this language in every goal. But I think right now for all of our sanity, we could just plug it in.
I like that language as well.
I do too.
I'm seeing several thumbs ups also, is there anybody who is opposed to this language?
I would like to make a comment. I feel like I understand exactly what Kathy's trying to say, that it's not the city's responsibility to provide jobs. So maybe this could be worded in a way to support businesses that provide living wage jobs or something like that.
So the proposal right now, folks, is, maybe it reads something like this Dawn, is partner with others to improve the city's economy by supporting businesses that, to increase living wage jobs. I do want to add in here though, that with your growing and new businesses and recruiting new businesses with your objective, some of that work is through your partners, so that's through St. Venice, through RAIN, through the Chamber. So you're not going to be doing it as city, you're just supporting those, whether you support them financially or you support them by giving them meeting space or, you know, promoting their events. It's not just about working with those businesses, it's about working with those organizations that, that support those businesses too. Trish, I see your hand up.
Okay, this is not important at all, but another like language structure, instead of saying partner with others, it could be build partnerships or strengthen partnerships. I think those are just stronger language changes, but not super important.
How many other goals are there under the strong economy?
One. And that was around that tourism conversation you guys had.
Okay, thank you. I may. I think this is pretty narrow. So the summary increased living wage jobs for a strong economy is the only thing we came up with?
So what you guys came up with, no, that's me capturing, that's my shorthand of the comments. So the objectives that fell under here is grow existing businesses and recruit new businesses. So that's through your partners, which I added in because you guys didn't get to that in the discussion, but your partners such as the Chamber, RAIN. You did mention ODAC and St. Venice. The second objective, fill the OIP with businesses and I added provide, that provide living wage jobs because it's not just businesses that are absent, you guys were talking a lot about jobs. And so that's where you get to, you're increasing your shovel ready lots and looking at leasable buildings and other objectives such as that, so.
And so where does that other thing fall? I mean, this is just very narrow. But there, are we, are there other goals that deal with the strong economy other than the tourism, recreation?
Not what, not that came out of your discussion, is there anything you feel like we forgot that we talked about?
Well, I think this is just a very narrow thing, I mean, the purpose of a municipality, if we want to use that word, purpose of a municipality is to make sure that all of the tools that are necessary for a business to come here are available easily and understand as well as market opportunities for growth of the economy outside of Oak Ridge, and we're not even talking about that. I mean, the, the city has, has a, has a mandate to, to make, make itself as open and viable for, for economic development as possible, but but they're not in the business of bringing business, of doing business. It's like someone coming to us and saying, hey, I think we need to have a, we need to have a gym, you should have a gym in Oak Ridge. Oh, yeah, we should have a gym, find someone who wants to build a gym and I will help you do everything you can as far as getting you through the paperwork and the policies and helping you with all this. It's not my job to go out and get the gym. It's my job to provide those tools for anybody who wants to do that. And in doing that, we provide a community that is open and welcoming so that people want to do that for us. I mean, I, I'm, I'm just a little concerned that this is very, very narrow.
So, point taken Kathy, but I think the ultimate objective of any economic development is that there are jobs that are living wage and not just really short term, right? That support families, you guys had supporting family language in there quite a bit. So, so maybe it's more like, it may be a whole new goal or broadening this goal, but maybe it's something like about improving the city's economy by focusing on ways to increase and support, you know, new businesses and expanding, like something like that. And then also, the other thing I was saying is access, like maybe it's an access issue, it is Oak Ridge somewhere, it's hard to establish a business, so. And I do see Trish's hand up.
Yes, as Kathy was sharing that, I was looking at the two goals that we have right now and I do think, I do think that we could either build out a third goal of kind of that infrastructure of how do we, you know, make Oak Ridge a place where businesses want to come. And I'm kind of having a hard time with it too, because I, I do think that we could either change either of these goals to be more inclusive to that infrastructure piece. Yeah, because the way I guess I'm reading it right now is, is this goal is more like, we're going to partner with these people in order to expand the economy. And then the second one is more around just that tourism industry and so we could, I guess reel back on the tourism and just say all industry. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you definitely could, because that was, I mean, the conversation was focused around that, but it seems like it'd be yeah, that the purview should be broader, could be broader.
Another quick thought though, is, is in that infrastructure piece for the responsive government, you know, is that inclusive to kind of what brings in, and builds the local infrastructure to bring in businesses?
And that's something I was just thinking when you were talking Trish, it's like, okay, so what's the problem that you're trying to fix over the next five years? And is it, is there a permitting problem with businesses, like is that the infrastructure that's a barrier? Or what are the barriers right now? And I don't know if that's so much, we hear the barriers, sorry you guys, I'm putting on my ODAC hat a little bit here, because I spent four years on ODAC. But we hear a lot of the barriers are not shovel ready places for businesses to move into. There's not the right kind of educated workforce that they would need to hire. There's not housing to put their people in, like, so it's not so much the city's not willing to work with it. It sounds, it seems like the city's been very willing to work with businesses that want to come here. It's just some of the additional things that you need to establish a business. I don't know if that's helpful at all.
That's right on the money, Sarah, you're exactly right. You know, I don't want people to walk away from this feeling like, oh, we have put up roadblocks. We have made great strides in making sure that we're open and, and it's easy to do things and string lining and working one on one with folks, but what you identified is exactly what is preventing us from moving forward.
So it's almost like I'm reading some of the comments that, that, or summaries that Katie's captured here. Those could almost be objectives too. It's like, an objective is a way you achieve the goal, right? So you have the goal and if, if being opening, open and welcome is a barrier, then maybe that's an objective of how to achieve that goal, right?
So open and welcoming, I mean, it's not provide a community, it's provide an atmosphere that is open and welcoming. Yeah. And I think we, I think we pretty much do that, I mean, how many, all of us have heard people say, oh, the reason why I really love Oak Ridge is also, it's so cool, everybody says hi to me, so, you know, hey, kudos to us.
So, um, I'm almost feeling like are we stuck on wordsmithing this one? We're not seeing any more hands, oh Dawn, yours just went up, okay.
Um, so Sarah, I liked what you pointed out earlier about something about figuring out why we haven't. Well, I can't even remember what you said now, I'm so sorry, but I'm wondering if we shouldn't be looking at where things have gone wrong with attracting business over the years, because as far as I know, we have had a lot of interest from a lot of people. And what I haven't heard on a top down kind of way is why these businesses haven't ended up here. Is that something that we should make as a goal is to figure out why?
Yeah, I think that does help you, because these goals should be solving, you know, or addressing challenges that the community faces. And I think this is helping to get at it, right? You guys aren't looking at the second goal right now, but the second goal around tourism, you guys brought up these year round, you know, finding ways to extend the seasons on that industry. But also with this, this goal right here around the increasing living wage jobs, those are the barriers that we hear from businesses. It's that if they were to come here, they have to stand up from scratch, right? Like, we don't really have shovel ready lots. Or, or just open business space that is ready to go, right? So you have to have a pretty big financial investment to, to start. And then two, is the workforce there that's ready and able to work. For a lot of businesses, no. Connectivity to fiber optic or high speed internet, major barrier. And then housing, major barrier. And then the other big thing that you guys, that I just don't think there's anything that the council can do about it is our proximity to Highway 58 is a huge barrier. So anyone that's going to do any kind of manufacturing, even though the rail's here, even if they could get on the rail, it's just so much cheaper for them to, to invest money right on, on that I-5 corridor, I said Highway 58, I meant I-5, I-5 corridor, so. But then, see, oh, Brian.
I think you're right on, mostly the things we're talking about here are our objectives, not the goal. So I think if we get back to the goal, which is something that need along the lines of, you know, you could say living wage job, but you could also say just create a an environment open to business, something along those lines where it would encompass all this stuff and then. an environment open to business, something along those lines where it would encompass all this stuff and then these would be underlying objectives.
Thanks, Brian. And so then I did see, Dawn, your hand's still up, but Kathy and then Chrissy.
Yeah, and I think at this point, and I, Brian, you're right, you're right on, you know, creating an environment that is open to business is, is the goal. And then we, we have all these objectives underneath it. I do want to make sure that we don't ignore the recreation piece though, because that is, it is very different. And I think Sarah, you alluded to that when you insert living wage jobs, because very often recreation jobs or recreation service jobs aren't living wage jobs, but people who use those to provide part of their income might have multiple jobs. While that's not ideal, that still doesn't mean that it isn't an important part of our community. I don't, and I want to respect and acknowledge all of those businesses that we have that exist off of recreation. And they may not provide a living wage job as would be defined by the state of Oregon. But they do provide jobs that allow them to live here, which is where they've chosen to be. So I don't want living wage jobs. I want it as an absolute, you know, benchmark that says that's what we want. But I also don't want that in any way to disrespect the recreation aspect that brings jobs to us. And it's important that we, that, that while we don't while we don't make that the only stool, the leg on the stool, that we acknowledge that it is a leg on our stool. It absolutely is.
Yeah, maybe some of that language that Brian had just suggested about just creating an environment open to business doesn't, is not precluding any type of jobs, right? It's just saying any, any type of economic investments are something the city wants to promote and partner with. Okay, see a thumbs up there. Chrissy, I did see your hand up. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. I think I do agree that these look like all objectives. All, or maybe not number one, but a top priority in this economic development is restructuring our ODAC committee. We've talked about this for the last year or more. And I really think it needs to be put to the forefront. We have a committee that has not been functioning very well. And all these objectives should be tackled by that committee. Other cities have high-functioning economic development committees that do work on tourism and integrating that into their economic development. I just think that restructuring and, you know, overhauling that committee is, really needs to be put to the forefront.
So Chrissy, we do have that captured in here for the afternoon discussion around the who, because that would definitely be the who is going to achieve these objectives. And that would be a place that that would be captured and maybe a lot of those would fall under that. If that helps structurally for you to understand how we're trying to guide the conversation.
Thank you, Sarah.
So Kathy, I still see your hand up. I don't know if you intend to, and I just want to give us a quick time check. We have 15 minutes left, so we will have to carry this discussion over to the afternoon after lunch, which is absolutely okay. This is a lot, lot to tackle. Wordsmithing's hard. But to maybe move us along on this discussion, would you guys be okay with? And we definitely want to keep everything we have here, but this goal, reframing it to read something along like in doing this in real time. So partner with others to improve the city's economy by creating an environment that's open to business? Would that be a better way to reframe this?
Can you say that again, Sarah?
Partnering with others to improve the city's economy by creating an environment that's open to business.
So Sarah, I think, I think if you flip that a little bit. So you said partnering with others to to improve the city's economy and what's the rest?
By creating an environment that's open to business.
So I think it should be create, create an environment that is open, open to business and partner with others. Because, yeah, because there is, are some things that we do to create that open environment as a city without partnering with anybody else.
You could keep that upper level open for business and then make the partnering with others a objective.
That's true too, Brian.
And I would probably say atmosphere instead of environment, but that's just me being piddly about words.
So that makes a pretty big tent for anything, any objectives you might want to nest under that. Does that meet the needs of of all the different? I mean, it seems like it could. It could definitely be a catch-all. And it's okay to have short, you know, goals. They don't have to be long. I think in the objectives is really where you flesh out how you're going to do that. Chrissy, is your hand, is that a new hand up? No, okay. So thoughts you guys on this rewrite? Katie has it on the screen here as the second bullet that's highlighted. So John's saying yes, good. Seeing Bobby's as well. And then we'll get back to it later with the edit. I should add here, you know, these like final word edits, this is going to go out to the community. So it might be when we, when we reconvene after the community survey, that new ideas around language tweaks come in. So this is trying to capture kind of the genesis of what your, what your thoughts are, but it doesn't have to be perfect right now. Okay, so I think then, we're not seeing any no's, so maybe in the last 10 minutes, let's look at the second strong economy goal. And then over lunch, we'll try and figure out a way we can work through these that might be easier for us to, to edit in real time.
All right, so the second goal under strong economy, as we've talked about, growing the local tourism industry and our proposed goal language for this is sustainably development, sustainably develop and market the recreational tourism industry in a way that benefits local businesses and residents. And the objectives as kind of a framing for this that we have are to develop tourist amenities and services in collaboration with businesses and partners. Working with recreation businesses and partners to extend the tourism season. I see a thumbs up from Kathy. Do other people like this language? Or have any suggestions for some ways to modify it?
I think I might have more thoughts on, on this stuff once we get into those, that objective conversation. Hopefully that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So can you go back over exactly how many goals we have under growing a strong economy?
We have two. Are you able to see these on the screen share with the two listed side by side?
We just edited that first.
So we
Yeah, the first one just got edited pretty heavily. And that's the creating an, either atmosphere or environment that's open to business.
And so that, just creating an atmosphere that's open to business is going to lend itself to creating living wage jobs? Or increasing living wage jobs? Is that what we're saying?
That's the column that would be in, yeah.
I don't, I don't know. I'm going to have to think about that one, because I'm struggling with it, so.
Maybe it becomes another goal that might help is to have another column and put it there as another goal. Oh, you are able to edit that in real time. I didn't know if you'd be able to, Katie. That might be a
I'm not, I'm not sure if it's going to the spreadsheet though. I need to check. I don't think it's updated. And if I hit update on my screen, it will. But at least it's capturing it in same spot. So I don't think I can create a column here though. Maybe I can. It's kind of messy, but.
Thoughts on, on looking at all three of these side by side now, you guys?
And so what was the decision on the middle one to improve the city's economy? We're focusing on increasing living wage jobs and whatnot. What, are we keeping that or are we getting rid of that?
I think the reason we just left it there, Bobby, is because you sounded like you didn't want to lose it. So we had done some several big edits. But yeah, by, by putting this next one next to it, it could be kept. I think that'd be a discussion to have and to see if you have objectives for all of them. And I don't know if we're just experiencing a little bit of fatigue here. We have been working pretty hard for a couple hours.
I'm totally getting hungry. But yeah, I think we've done a good job, you know, narrowing these down, recognizing that each of these goals aren't, you know, these, these goals encompass the umbrella and a lot of things are underneath each one of those, you know, like for example with this, the living wage jobs are under this. The, the easily accessible business information for new businesses. The support of our, of our chamber to, to continue to improve the businesses that we have or whatever it is. There's a lot of things underneath those umbrellas. But if we make those umbrellas too narrow, they, they leave out things. And that's what I really want to get to. For me, looking at these goals, once we get these done, they become, they become our guiding, our guiding principle as we make decisions. And if they're too narrow, we're going to miss out on opportunity that may come to us, because we say, oh, well, that doesn't really fit in there. Well, it does probably. So anyway, that's just my two thoughts, because I'm getting hungry.
I think fair enough. I think that's good. So I'm hearing it's okay to, to work at it like this, adding that in there. And then as we, like Tricia said, as you see the objectives, it might help a little bit more with that determining if, if, if everything's in there as far as those goals, if they're broad enough or if maybe some of the goals collapse together. Or, or if you're, we're missing something totally. So. Well, I think with that, maybe what we should do, it's five to noon, so maybe we let you guys off until 12:30. Katie and I can stay on here. And so I think, don't, we're going to mess with the screens to see how you guys are seeing and how we can work real time a little bit better. So I think don't get hung up on everything you're seeing that's happening on the screen during lunch. Maybe just take a break and take a minute to go outside. And then we'll reconvene at 12:30. If you need to bring your lunches back with you, please do. And we can pick up going into community livability and then expanding into those objectives. Does that sound like a good plan? Has everybody already taken lunch, or broken for lunch? They're like, I'm out. Okay, I'm seeing some, I'm seeing some yeses. So, all right, so let's take a break and come back at 12:30. And then Katie, let's stay on. Oh, don't, don't cancel your screen. Let's, let's you and I stay on. Maybe Brian can stop the recording and we can work on logistics here.
Is Brian still on?
Okay, folks, we have about a minute to go before we resume the meeting. Hopefully everyone's not outside. Okay, we're starting to see some folks come back online. All right, well, we are at 12:30 and I think what I will do here as frame up, we're kind of assembling everyone back together is I just want to tell you guys that, acknowledge how much work this is. So drafting goals and wordsmithing and thinking, you know, really big scale for five years in a big group is a lot of work. So I really appreciate everybody is here and able to do this work and putting their time towards it. So, so we are, we only have a couple hours left today. And we are almost done wordsmithing goals, knowing there might be some go-backs. So I wanted to give you, I'll give you a frame of how I think we're going to use that time. But first, I wanted to remind everybody that, so the process that we're doing is we're going to go through the goals today, hopefully getting as close as we can to the correct language and the goals that you want, capturing the things that you want to see happen over the next five years in the city. And then we'll go through the objectives and, and see that if we organize the objectives correctly that you've given us so far, we might find some new ones we need to add. But then all of that work will go out to the community in a form of a survey. So they'll see your goals and your associated objectives. And what we'll ask them to do is to prioritize those. So probably on a ranking scale, one to five, is this goal and are these priorities? For each priority, where do you rank them? So you'll know what the community thinks. And then we'll also ask, is there, is there any objectives that we missed or anything you'd like to add? So I anticipate from that, we will get new objectives back and also tasks to go with those objectives. And so that'll be additional information. And then there might even be new goal ideas that come out of that feedback. And then you guys will have the time to, over that month, to really think through things a little bit deeper and sit with the material. And then we'll come back probably in September for a two-hour meeting to review the feedback from the community and to finalize all of the, finalize the final language for goals and the associated objectives. And then capture any of the tasks that you want to capture under those. So is that a helpful reminder of our process? I guess what I'm trying to communicate to you is like, today's not your last shot. Don't feel like you have to pull it all out of your brain in the next two hours. Want to make sure we can, can get a good start at this work today.
Bobby has her hand raised.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
So this is Bobby. Over lunchtime, I was really thinking, and I feel like I feel like our goals need to be a little more specific, kind of how you had started them. I feel like we were moving in a more vague direction. And I don't know if that's really what we want to do, because this is only a five-year plan. It's not like it's our TSP where it's a 20-year plan. And I feel like we need a little more defined goals, just because it is our direction from the top down. And, and it helps give us, give us a little more a better platform of where to start on how we want to do some things. So that was just my one concern. And I don't know how other people feel about that. So I don't know if anybody else wants to speak to that or not, but but that was just something I was feeling. So I wanted to just kind of throw that out there for discussion.
I personally feel like we can be really specific with our, with our objectives.
I personally feel like we can be really specific with our, with our objectives.
I agree with you, Tricia. And Bobby, I understand what you're saying. For me, these, these goals are, are the broader statement, and then the objectives are the detail within that.
Okay, I just don't, I just don't want to lose what we have from earlier where we really reworked some goals because there were some very specific things in there that I think are really important. So I just don't want to lose that as we go into the objectives then.
And Bobby, I was just going to tell you that when we look at the objectives, I'm going to share my screen here in just a second. You'll get to see them underneath the goals. So I think that might be one way to make sure that as you're editing, if there's things that need to get carried through or you don't want to lose, we can look at that. So what I'm going to do right now for our last two goals, we're just going to go straight to the spreadsheet that we've been working off of. So you guys will see everything from the spreadsheet on community livability. And as I'm sharing that, we had initially couched this as community vitality, but we heard feedback that that word's a little bit, not, not quite the right word. So is livability a good sub in for you guys? Does that express it better about what we're trying to to work here with, with the, the community?
I think livability is just a little bit more friendly to the layman, but I'm, I'm fine with either.
And if anyone has any other better words, then definitely, please do share. Okay, so I see my screen is kind of small for you guys to view. I'll try and get this down. Maybe I can make my, my font a little bit smaller. We can get them all in. I don't know if that's going to work. How is this?
If you go under view and do full screen, that should also help a little bit.
Oh, okay. Thanks, Katie. So is that working for you guys? We almost have it all in here, not. So for community livability, we have three goal areas. So you guys are now seeing the organization of the, of the objectives that we were hearing and trying to fit in here. But let's, I'll, I'll read through them all and then we can, we're going to still just focus on goal language. Oh, and timelines. So we're going to work on this. I'd like to have these goals, if we can, wordsmith by one o'clock. And then that would leave us a little less than 15 minutes each to go back through each one of our theme areas and, and double check those objectives. So that's not a lot of time. And, and if we can carve off some of each one of those 15 minutes, we can have a little bit more time to talk about process in the end. So that being said, I don't want to suppress discussion you guys need to have. So if we need to discuss and we don't make it all the way through the objectives, I think that's okay. But just want to give you some of that time check there. So again, the, the strong economy and community livability, these were the theme areas where really you're achieving these goals through your partnerships and working with community organizations and through your committee work and, and whatnot. So I didn't, and then I did not pull in the partnership word a lot, but we might want to insert it in these goals. So around the, the priority area of family services and youth enrichment, there's discussion on that. So a goal recommendation or suggestion we came up with is to work with community partners to provide recreation, education, enrichment opportunities for citizens and youth. The talk around affordable housing. We created, find creative ways to work with public and private partners to increase access to housing. And for revitalizing the city, we heard stuff both about High 58 and about Uptown. Is, and then the empty spaces around the community. So I just term that as neighborhoods. Seek opportunity to revitalize cities' business corridors and neighborhoods to provide safe and beautiful places to live and work. So that's all of those in this livability. And if I could pull us back to the first goal, work with community partners to provide recreation, education, enrichment opportunities for citizens and youth. Does that sound correct to the discussion you guys were having around priorities?
I think all of these look great. I actually don't have any feedback for any of them.
Trish, I wasn't trying to force you guys along too much, so.
I actually mean that.
I have hands. I am seeing check marks, but I'm not sure if those are holdovers.
I agree with you, Tricia. These, these look really good. I don't see any words that I'm reading that are giving me any grief at all. Yeah, I'm good with these.
Can I see a couple check marks? Are those yeses or are those holdovers? I'm seeing another one. Okay, I'm seeing several check marks come on.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, well, we'll take an easy one then. We'll take a win. No, actually, you guys have been doing great on this. This is really hard work. So. Well, then if that's, if, if we are liking how this is looking, then maybe I will pull this back. We'll go back to safe community. I'll look at the objectives under that. And, and then talk through if there's some rewording of the goals, that question around the fiscal. And as we have the conversation, looking at the objectives, we're not going to have full time today to go into assigning out, you know, who, who needs to do the work, what exactly all the tasks are and how they'll get done, or the timeline for them to get done, the when. That was something we were hoping to do. So I think what we will do, though, is in the discussion, if some of these questions get answered, Katie has another spreadsheet open. She'll fill that information in for us. Okay, so taking us back to safe community. So this was a couple hours ago. I'm sure it feels like last week. So the two goals were to ensure a safe community by collaborating to protect people. Oh, wait, we changed collaborating, partnering. We need to get this one corrected. Partnering to protect people, property and environment, and provide efficient, effective services for public safety. So I'm going to make this a little bit bigger for you guys. Oh, too big. I can pull this in. And so these objectives. So under partnering for to protect people, property and environment, one of the, the objectives that came up is utilizing the public safety committee to help reduce crime. Increase access to mental health and social services is another objective. And to become a model community for emergency preparedness, wildfire and smoke risk reduction. Do those sound like good objectives? Does this resonate with what you?
I, sorry, I don't see if there's any hands. Okay. I fear that objective number one is going to be way too narrow. I think there's so much more that goes into public safety than just crime reduction.
Yeah, so absolutely, the crime reduction could fall under a task under there. So do you have suggestions on how to reword that? And do you still want it to be an objective around that public safety committee?
That's almost where it could be more of a the who, the public safety committee is, but I guess it could also be an objective. Let me think around it and maybe someone else can have a thought on that.
This is Bobby. I don't think we necessarily have to define it through the public safety committee. So I see where, where you were getting hung up on that.
I see Kathy's hand is raised also.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree, Bobby. I, I think that's kind of a little restrictive. I mean, yes, we'll use the public safety committee. But we may use other committees. We may use an ad hoc council committee to look at things. We may reach out to an outside agency to come up with some ideas. I mean, there's lots of different things that are in that. I'm not sure that that's an objective. But I agree with the other two, increasing access to mental health and social services. I think that should absolutely be a, a goal. And to becoming and using us as a model community for emergency preparedness, wildfire and smoke risk, risk reduction is just right on point with everything that we're going to be going through in the next five years and what we've started already.
Okay, I don't see. And, okay, so I think with that reduced crime, we could just say crime reduction is an objective, but also I think, you know, part of that community safety is also, and it kind of lumps in with firewise, but it's not, right? Like code enforcement, making sure that people's properties are clear of obstructions. And that way, you're also helping your community. So I don't know if, if crime reduction and code enforcement could go hand in hand, or if we need to have them as separate objectives.
Well, could we just have us like improve community safety and reduce crime?
So that's kind of that improved community safety. Well, that's like the whole, oh, I'm looking at the priority, not the goal.
Yeah, so the priorities were, I, I can even hide that. That was just us trying to capture things into columns.
Right. Forgive me, it's been a very long week.
Okay, so maybe if we try this, because we don't have community, right? And then, and then just an and.
Safety, making these crime. You know, I'm, I'm thinking that there has to, there, there is a part of this, part of, I'm, I, and maybe, maybe we can kind of toss the ball around a little bit, but part of this objective is, is a little more pointed. It's education and empowerment. It's, a lot of the times, I think we don't know what we can do as individuals or community members or even counselors. So it's, it's educating and empowering our community to participate in the, in the, in safe streets and, and reduction in crime, or whatever it is that might be too specific. But, but I think there needs to be that, that good, a statement about communicating that information to our community so that they can, so that they know what to do, how to do it, as specific to crime, specific to vandalism, specific to things like that. Because I think we all kind of have seen as counselors, there is this kind of attitude of, well, what can I do anyway? There isn't anything I can do. When there really is a lot we could do if we educated ourselves. And, and then we're given, given the tools to, to do that. And I'm being very, very careful here that I'm not getting into vigilante and stuff. I just mean knowing when to call, how to call, who to call. Knowing how to interact with your neighbors in order to, to provide safety, whether it's through a neighborhood watch or not. You know, it's educating new individuals as they come to our community about how to, how to function in a, in a small town that provides our own services here. And what does that mean? And what are your responsibilities? Is there, I mean, anyway, toss the ball out there.
I agree with that, Kathy. And I, I do think that, you know, these objectives are where we can get a little bit more specific. So I appreciate that language change. And to me, that looks good right there as it sits. It still feels a little broad, but I think we could spend all day trying to get, you know, more specific.
And I did see a thumbs up from Dawn as well.
Sarah, one, one question here. These objectives, they really, the way they're worded, they, they have to result in something that's measurable, right?
Yep.
Something to think about as you look at, as you word these things, is would, what, would what you say be measurable down below?
Yeah, I think that's a question for you guys. How, how would you see this as, as something that you can improve upon and show that you have improvement?
Well, that is where we could get even more specific, like an objective would be to task the public safety committee with developing a neighborhood watch program kind of thing. But again, we could get very specific and it could take a very long time to do that.
Well, and we actually, so hidden here, just so you guys know, we have some of the tasks that came up. I don't think we're going to have time today to get into all these, but after this goes out to the community, we will probably have more to add in there. So at some point, you will be able to see those tasks. Does that help knowing that that's, that stuff's there? And then we're capturing stuff in the notes if there's other things that come up. And a little bit on this one is the who. So we heard, I'm looking at objective one still. We heard who would be, the safety committee would be likely who on this. There might be others. Do we have a who on increased access to mental health and social services?
I think that could be that community services committee. I know that's linked in with parks and might not be their realm. But I do think as we have these conversations, it's really important for us as a council to reflect how we can task our, our committees to take off some of this load from the council. Even though that's more of a social service than a, a community service.
And I think adding to what you just said, Tricia, which I think is really important.
Oh, Kathy, you just went off.
Sorry. So I think, I agree with what Tricia said, really important to think about how we can test this. But I also think that, that we should not, we should not think that we have to pass it on to a committee, that a lot of this is going to fall on the shoulders of counselors and participating in, in maybe outside committees in the county, communicating in the, you know, with those agencies and being, you know, being a voice. So that's going to be, I think council needs to really do that. It's hard, especially when we have counselors that are, that are employed. And, you know, you've got things going on like that, but we need to, to also make sure we task ourselves with goals. And, and I think we're getting there.
Yeah, I wanted to tag off of that, actually. It made me think that community solutions committee that was for homeless housing, the, the one that Bobby had mentioned. So I think maybe not even, I guess, just exploring committees that we could participate in.
Right.
So the city already actually participates in that committee, by the way.
That's fine. I think just having it noted.
Good. And then for the last one, the model community for emergency preparedness, wildfire and smoke risk reduction. You're already doing a lot of work as a city through the Oak Ridge Air Program. And then also the emergency preparedness. I think that stuff's ongoing on the plan. And I think those through your safety committee, you'll have to tell me.
Sorry, sorry. You were, you were asking if our public safety committee is kind of looking at this emergency preparedness, wildfire, smoke. I would look to Brian on, on that front or Councilor Forkum. Because I don't think the wildfire, smoke risk reduction, but maybe the emergency preparedness.
Yeah, but yeah, that would be for Oak Ridge Air, which is doing both of those right now. And then the emergency preparedness. And I know that there's that broader plan that I think was being reviewed at one point.
But Brian, it's in the recent time since they just stood up, they really haven't discussed that particular aspect. But not to say they couldn't.
And looking at these notes over here, it looks like the CERT team is, is something measurable that we could build out for that emergency preparedness. And then Chief Martin says crime prevention program, and that's likely under objective one.
Great. Okay, let's move on to objective number two then, I mean, a goal number two with its objectives. So provide efficient, sustainable services for public safety. The two that came out of previous discussions were improved street safety. There was quite a few comments around that. And then we put under here, expanding transportation services within the community and for commuters. You know, we felt like it had a, a public safety aspect of it with our commuters. High 58 is dangerous, so the bus is a safer option. Though maybe this could tip over into both economic, the, the strong economy or even the livability. But we put it in here and then also the, oh, and that was it. Okay. But there might be others that didn't come out of the discussion because everybody said, you know, Uh, the, oh, and that was it, okay, but there might be others that didn't come out of the discussion, cause everybody said, you know. Uh, fire EMS, police, but not, there was not specific phrases that came out other than just saying those, you know, alluding to those departments being important. So I don't know if there's certain objectives for this or not, or maybe it's just generally in that goal, your ongoing work captures them.
So are you asking about objective number two? As far more goals for that, or is that what we're doing?
Yeah, a column C, um, that goal, is there any other objectives to add to that and how do those objectives look?
Okay. Um, so yeah, I think for me, I mean, uh, if we're getting specific about objectives, um, I would specifically, I want um, physical therapy. In our, in our community, too many people have to travel into town for that, um, so I think working, working to expand our medical services up here. Is extremely important. Um, to continue to expand them, medical and, you know, dental or whatever that incorporates physical therapy, I think medical is a catchall. Um. And uh. Yeah, I don't know where that, that falls, but I think.
Oh, Kathy, maybe that comes over here, um, cause that's another one of those partnering.
Yeah.
It comes over here to objective two and column B, and we say uh. In- increase access to medical services, health and social services.
Yeah. And yeah. I agree, and then the other thing that, that keeps popping up in the back of my head that would be great to, in the next five years to improve is uh. Uh, assisted living facilities. Um, I mean, I think we need to be thinking about the elderly population, whether it's assisted living sus- facilities that do daycare or do. Or have actually live in opportunities. Um, you know, we, we may be missing, missing out on, on a good opportunity to be able to do some of that as we improve our medical services that becomes more viable. And I'd like to keep that in the, in the front burner.
Yeah, and I think when you talk about assisted living, I think you want to um. Not necessarily focus on assisted living, um, cause there's so many different types of facilities. So I, I don't know what word to really put in there, but um. So maybe senior and disability services type of facility, something that would really encompass all of them.
But I feel like this is more tasks that could come under this objective two.
Okay.
Medical service when we're talking about um.
Yeah.
Senior services in, in home or um, or out of home.
Tricia, you've had your hand up for a second.
I think that can also go under community livability, um, but a thought on uh, that second goal. Um, sorry, I'm blanking, uh, uh, kind of recruiting volunteers for um, both the fire department and for. Um, the police as a, a way to kind of provide that sustainable service, uh, cause obviously our budget is restricted, even though I know volunteers also cost some sort of money, but.
If I say emergency services, does that include police? Okay.
And Kathy, interesting, I see both of your hands are still raised. I just wanted to double check if those are still. Okay, thanks.
Okay, if there's not a lot here, I'm gonna move on, cause there is, you, you guys have more time to either think it through with a survey. Um, when we come back with feedback from the community. Okay. Just checking, I'm not seeing either hands. Okay, moving on to responsive government. So let me see if I can, it's a little too. Big. How's that look for you guys? Um, so for responsive government, we had three goals, we did, this is where we did some wordsmithing and felt like we needed to come back and look at it some more. Um, so the goals as they are right now with some edits, knowing there are still some discussions, so I kind of stopped at a certain point with editing, but. The first one, in an open and transparent manner, effectively deliver services that citizens need, want and support. The second is provide municipal services, facilities and infrastructure that support current and future needs in a fiscal responsive manner that ensures long-term financial stability. And then the third one is the discussion we were having at the end of um, that topic, talking about should there be just a standalone fiscal goal? That has room for it for an objective for a balanced budget and stabilizing EMS services. Emergency services. So um, let's go back to the first one and put the other two on the back burner for now. So the objective is under the first one, um, when we were building that one out, the things that kind of rose to the top were. Improve consistency and reliability of city communications. Um, and that, some of that includes things like the website, um, and the talk of, like, we think some of the things that came up were talking points, other tasks like that. Um, two is promote a positive work environment for city staff by providing clear expectations and tools needed to perform the job. Um, there were some comments that came out about, you know, prioritizing what uh, the um, missions are for the departments and making that clear to them, um, and then also. The tools um, discussion was uh. Um, I don't remember what, maybe, yeah, I cannot remember exactly what the tools were, but there was, there was some talk about tools. Um, so I think I'm thinking of uh, the adminis- not administration, fiscal, budgeting.
Accounting software?
Was that?
Was it that, was that where the accounting software was captured?
Yeah, maybe that's where I was thinking, what, the tool to do the job, yep. Um, then number three, leveraging volunteer time wisely, so that was discussion around how you task out your committees. And the work that you ask them to do, um, and then investing in the types of projects that people want to support with their time. Um, and then the last one, it kind of floated around many different places, we stuck it here for now, um, modernizing city guiding documents, so that was discussion around the charter. Um, and then policies and procedures, um. Again, not the charter, but some other.
Just like the city ordinances and internal policies, like a communications policy, fell under that from last week's discussion. I also want to acknowledge Bobby's hand is raised.
Oh, so for me, um, going back to the word tools, I know that was part of what I had talked about, and that was making sure. Like our, like, for example, the police officers have good tools to do their jobs, such as um, equipment in their cars, um, safe cars. Just that more broader thing that allows them to do their job. And um, for me, tools also goes back to the ordinances and making sure they're appropriate and that it's a good tool that they can use to. Enforce um, different things that we want for our city.
And I should say on that one, the wording on that might not be totally correct, but I, I pulled the promote a positive work environment. Um, out of some other objectives I saw, because you guys had had some discussion about how you really do want to acknowledge the value that um. Of, of your city staff, and so. Um, I pulled it, I was trying to pull that into there, but just, you know, that's what, where that came from.
See Tricia's hand is up, sorry. Go ahead, Bobby, sorry about that.
I just was gonna say that, that's great, I appreciate that.
All right, we have Tricia and then Kathy.
Something I'm not seeing on here, um, is that piece uh, for accountability, and maybe that's because it's under one of those measurable kind of metrics. Um. But if not, I, I do think it's important that we delineate that somewhere.
Yeah, I think that would fall under those roles and responsibilities, um, and not, and policy and procedures, so any of your accountability measures would be in your policy and procedure guiding documents.
Okay. And so with the language of modernized city guiding documents, um, policies and procedures. I, I don't know that it's so much as modernizing, you know, that accountability process as it is just following through.
Mm-hmm.
Or building them out.
Mm-hmm.
I know it's something that we worked on quite a bit this year as a council, but.
Yes, we put that.
Okay. Actually, I'm sure we don't lose it. It's, I think it's really important to have those type of assessments.
Well, maybe what that is, maybe it does need another word in there, it, it, cause there is, I'll talk of moderni- modernizing, need to, you know, update the charter, update. Uh, the ordinances, but you guys also talked about there being conflicting information in the um. Get harder, and so uh, maybe the word is modernizing the, the documents, but um. Not implementing, what was the word I was just thinking, adhering to or something along those lines, so.
I mean, I like the word implementing as well, like implementing um, annual reports or city administrator. Evaluation and, um, you know, even something for the CA to implement is making sure that. Those staff evaluations are getting done, stuff like that. I, I don't know that it's, I don't know, maybe it's something you guys wordsmith later, but. That's just the thought I have.
Would it be too much? Sorry if I walked on somebody, would it be too much to add? Modernize city guiding documents and policies and procedures so that they can be used? Or so that they are used or in, in use or something like that, or is it a whole new objective?
So I was gonna say, maybe, maybe it is attached to that, but what it is, is, is um, prioritizing evaluation. Evaluations of um, of our um. Not just city employees, but prioritizing the evaluations of evaluation, evaluating um, our progress. As well as our individuals, I mean, nothing, you can't quantify how well you've done unless you examine it. Uh, and you can't quantify where you're failing unless you examine it. You only end up doing knee jerk reactions to both. Um, and I don't want that, yeah, I don't want us to do that anymore, cause I think we have done that um, too, too often. You know, we, we have a knee jerk reaction about something that is either positive or a knee jerk reaction about something is negative, but we don't take a step back and then, and, and. Quantify and analyze what it is that we um, were having a, a response, an emotional response to. Um. And, uh, Tricia, help.
No, I think what you're saying is spot on, and in, with that being an objective five, as I'm understanding it being written out, um, some of those measurable outcomes could be those. Evaluation forms for whatever they're for, so looking at our um, strategic plan, making sure that we're like, looking back at that, looking at our comprehensive plan, whatever it might be that we've built out, but also looking at. Our committees and our, our staff and all the other things that we should be monitoring and evaluating.
I was gonna put initiatives, but maybe, maybe just leaving it like that and then under the tasks, you can figure that out.
So, uh, I, can we go back to objective number two? Uh, you know, promoting a positive work environment for city staff by providing clear expectations. I'm, I'm a little. I'm a little hesitant about this, um, not because I don't think we should provide, I think what we should do is, is uh, you know, promote that positive work environment. Um, for city staff. Um, but we don't provide the clear expectations and tools. I mean, so is this, are we, is this a statement that is specific to administration? Are you trying to tell your city administrator what to do, or are you telling yourself? Because if we're telling ourselves, we don't provide that clear expectation. We provide, we respond to what the city administrator says. We need these tools to make, to make my employees more efficient. We need um, I need more direction from you so that I can provide direction to them. I mean, so are we talk, what are we talking about here? I think it's a little muddled, and I'd like a little more clarity in that.
Yeah, and so when I wrote it, I thought I was talking to you guys, um, so it's like when you're saying you have a new initiative. I uh, that you want city staff to invest their time in, you know, being clear that that initiative is achievable, that there are the tools there to do it. Um, but it might not be the right words, and like you're saying, Kathy, I could be misunderstanding, I was just trying to capture what your discussion was.
No, I think you're exactly right. I mean, that makes total sense to me. For some reason, my brain didn't go down that track at all. Um, so yeah, and, and if everybody else went down the same track that you just went down, then I'm cool and I will readjust my trucking.
Well, but maybe it needs to be clear that um, that. That this is, you know, like, the council needs to provide or needs to promote a positive work environment.
I would like that. I think that is important, because we don't say that enough to be supportive.
Um, not can, my brain is starting to, this, I'm getting after lunch. Works to promote or um. Put that in there for now, but it might need some more. And it, it maybe it's not expectations, maybe it's like you were saying directives or direction, policy direction, clear policy direction, I'm not sure.
Uh, I think policy is a good, uh, good word for city council.
Policy direction or just policy? I'll put it in there, sure.
Looks like Bobby's hand is up too, but.
Bobby, did you have a comment?
Uh, no.
Yeah, I think that's just up from the last time.
Okay. Okay, good, well, let's move on to goal number two then, we can come back if we need to, but the second.
John's hand is up.
Oh, go ahead.
I just wonder how we measure that. How do you measure that the city council has worked to promote a positive work environment through clear policy direction?
I think you measure that by um, surveys and staff morale and how they do their job and how they interact with citizens. I think that's how that's measured. If we're supporting our city staff. Then I think it, it allows them to do a better job, it makes them feel better about their job and um, just creates a healthier work environment for everybody, and that just. Flows over into their interactions with citizens.
I also.
Go ahead, Tricia, I'm sorry.
Um, I was gonna say, I also think that um, you know, what could be measurable is by. So the, the, the objective would be city council works to promote a positive working environment for city staff. And then providing clear policy direction and the tools needed to perform the job are more those measurable outcomes, but also it could be that um, evaluation process and. Um, you know, something else I think that the city council do, could do that's measurable is at the beginning of the year, look at what they want. For the city direction, and so if that's increased um, ticketing or, you know, highway traffic stops, I know you can't ask for that, but. Putting police on the, the, the highway, that's something that we could outline in a document that says, here's kind of what we want from each of our departments this year. Um, understanding that some of that might be stepping on um, the CA's toes, so I would, I would ask Brian kind of um.
So you, you might be right, Trish, and the, and the ta- the tasks that we assigned or kind of created this out of, do you have that? So maybe it should just, we should take off this um. The second two lines of that, yes.
Maybe we even create a, um, a city council staff appreciation day or something, you know?
You know what, I, I disagree, I strongly disagree.
Why? Why, Bobby?
Why? Because this guy, this plan is a plan that is for our city and it goes from the top down. And it isn't, it isn't that it just comes in and starts at city staff level, it starts at administrative level, I believe. And so I think as you take that out, you take. That piece out, that that is our expectations as part of our goals and our tasks for our city, and I think it just needs to be there for, that way it's. Covering from the whole top down. Um. And that is, you know, I don't know how long Brian will be here, and I don't know who the next city administrator will be at any point in time. But I think we need to keep that there and make sure that everybody that comes in behind and, and as anybody coming into our community, they're gonna see that we. Um, respect our staff, we value our staff, we appreciate our staff, and we're giving them and promoting. And planning for them to have the tools to do their job. That's why I disagree with removing that.
The measurables will be listed, right, in the plan? Yeah, okay. Um, for me, I feel comfortable taking that out. I, I do hear what Bobby's saying, but I think that having it written somewhere will be really helpful. Um, but I would open it up to others.
I hear what you're saying, Bobby, but I. Hmm, I'm, I'm a little torn, because I think, I think Tricia, you kind of hit it, hit a bit, touched a bit on it a bit when you said, you know, are we gonna be stepping on. On, on overstepping our bounds instead. On, on overstepping our bounds and stepping on the toes of the city administrator. You know, we're specifically told not to do that. Our, you know, we, we can't do that and direct him. We can only direct him in our policy and then he directs his staff. And, and while I, I, to me, when I look at this, what I, what I think it is. It's almost in a way, it's, it's almost a goal, although I wouldn't want to move it there. Is, it's a, it's an affirmation. It's a policy. It's a, it's a, it's a value in our city. We value. And we will support our city staff and provide and. In their work, you know, so it's. And how do we do that? We promote a positive work environment by respecting our city staff, all of them. By, by following guidelines ourselves that we would want our city staff to follow. I mean, we can get into some detail about that if we wanted to. I mean, we have specific policies for our council. That we have said we will, we will do our best to follow. But that also means we follow those policies with our city staff. We are open and honest with them. We go to them directly with questions. We, you know, we support them in it, in the community and, and don't attack them. And look at them as a part of the team. So really what we're saying is city council is we consider our city staff. Part of our team and we, and because of that, we are going to promote positivity within them. So I don't know, I, I understand what Bobby's saying about wanting more detail on there. About this is how we do it, but I think in doing that, what you are, you may have crossed the line a little bit. So maybe concentrate on what it is as city council. We want to communicate to staff that we are there, that we understand your importance and. And we will work because we're continually working for the betterment of the community. I'm not working for the betterment of the staff. That is something the city administrator does as he sees ways that, or he or she sees ways that improving policy or procedures. Can help the staff improve their job too. I'm working for the betterment of the city, not the staff directly.
We have Chrissy and John.
All right. I feel like I follow what Bobby was saying and I'm. I guess I'm hoping for somebody to really identify how in what she's saying, how does that cross? How does that, I guess, cross the line with the city administrator? Maybe some examples or something because I feel like what she's saying is important to us and is a value. And I'm just not seeing how it crosses the city administrator. So if someone has a, maybe an example or further detail on that, I'd be appreciative to hear.
I just put the language back in this, so you guys can see what the language is.
All right, we are coming also from John and then if anybody had anything to respond to Chrissy.
Well, well, I may. Cause this second measurable expectations between city officials and staff. Again, according to, if we go along with what the mayor says and then I agree with it. We, we don't direct the city staff in any way. We direct the. City administrator. We are the creators of policy. We are not the instruments of that policy. The city administrator is the instrument in regards to policies. And they're directed out through the appropriate staff to make those policies take, take place.
And this was probably.
We, we start to say that we're going to. Clarify our expectations to the staff. It's not the staff, it's the city administrator. When we're going to, you know, and, and by doing that. By being clear with the city administrator with the policy and the, so that the city administrator can be clear with the staff. It creates a, a better work environment because then there's no wondering what's going on. But it's not us to the city staff. It's the city council, to the city administrator, to the city staff. Or actually to the, to the department heads and then down to the staff.
So I, I, and that specifically came from a comment from our last one. So I put it in there. So. These, some of these might need to be, you know, clarified more. So does that get at it? Clarify policy expectations between city officials and city leadership? Or is it just the city administrator?
I, I've got a.
In my mind, it should be the city administrator.
Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, just a suggestion. You could say, city council. Will provide a resource properly and provide clear policy direction through their motions, resolutions and ordinances.
And do you, do you mean that as an objective or a measurable task?
Uh, that would probably be a, let's see. Could be an objective, I guess, instead of number two, you could.
Okay, so. We'll provide resources and then I think there might be something else then through.
And clear policy through their motions, resolutions and ordinances.
Sorry, resolutions, motions and ordinances?
Or resolutions and ordinances if you like.
It looks like Bobby's hand is up also.
Sorry, it just took me a minute to get my mute off. I just wanted to go back again, just a little bit to. My statement before when John was asking kind of how. We do the, how we. Provide staff the tools they need to do their jobs adequately and efficiently. And some of that is how we budget. So as a council, we sit on the budget committee and then we also pass the budget. So the, those are some of the mechanisms that we as counselors would use to do that, but how. Those things technically work within the city, that is, I believe, what the city administrator does. And I think the statement is broad enough that it is saying that we support that. And want them to be able to do their jobs with the tools they have. I just wanted to clarify.
And I think just looking at the time. We're spending a lot of time on this one. So I think it'd be helpful for me, maybe. If we can do a yes or no on the second line here and just go by majority. And then remember this is about to the public and then come back and then will be prioritization. So. So do we want to keep this, do we want to end this? Objective with, at city staff, or do you want to have the second phrase on there? So if you. Want to have the shorter version, please say yes now.
I'm saying four yeses, five yeses and one no.
Okay, I think for now we'll have, we'll go with a shorter version then. We can review again after surveys.
Chrissy, I see that your hand is still up. I just wanted to make sure that that was a holdover from before or to see if anything else.
I apologize. I forgot. I'll take it down.
No worries. Thank you.
Okay, so goal area number two, provide municipal services, facilities and infrastructure that supports current and future needs in fiscally responsible manner that ensures long-term financial stability. Now, I guess you guys are seeing our measurable tasks under there. So you can see why we came up without objective. I'm going to hide it for now. Initially, we had stabilized funding under that one, but it sound like maybe that should get pulled over under a new fiscal goal. And that this one should possibly just be a goal around. Infrastructure, facilities and infrastructure. Is that correct or open up for discussion here?
Yeah, I, I think, I think that does make more sense when I see the goals and you've hidden them again, but when I see the goals. Then it makes more sense to say, provide municipal services, facilities and infrastructure that support current and future needs. Of Oak Ridge for one, and then in the fiscal goal is, would be to. To manage, manage our finances, finances in a responsible manner that ensures the long-term financial stability. I mean, there, I think one, it's, it's, it would be easy to say, well, that's a given, but I, I don't think it should just be a given. I think it should be its own goal. And maybe that's too simplistic, but I, I think it's important that it is right there.
What, you said it provides for what, Kathy?
It's responsible manner and ensures long-term financial stability or ensuring whatever is the best way to do it. Tricia would know.
I like that idea too, parsing that out. And yeah, deleting that off of the, the second one, but.
Take out municipal services and this would just be facilities and infrastructure, right?
And then would we get rid of that in a fiscally responsible manner that ensures long-term financial stability?
Okay. So and maybe that falls under this. The reason I did do that is because isn't there like some long-term investments that need to be made in wastewater and, and stuff? That's where.
Yeah, but you're not, okay, go back, get your needs.
I think it could be an objective.
Yeah, but then would you just keep that term future need that can pull under any of these long-term investments you need to do?
Sarah, can you, can you open up the goals again?
Or the tasks?
Yeah, the tasks. I'm sorry.
Okay, so open this one. So these will go over here now. And then. So these were, yeah, these were the discussions that you, discussion points you guys had. So tasks under city infrastructure, wastewater, street repairs. Fiber optic and development, a capital investment priority list. And maybe this could even be its own objective. I think we kind of went back and forth with that one.
Yes, that needs to be its own objective. I mean, yeah, okay, I, I'm not going there. I don't have enough brain power to do that. I don't think it should be an objective.
Oh, it shouldn't be. Okay.
No, it should not be. Absolutely not.
Okay.
I mean, council should be aware of and approve capital. Investments, but that investment priority list should be created by the city administrator and department heads. And then brought to council that says, this is what we believe needs to be done. And that way we're aware of what needs to be done. So as we begin to fit, plan the budget. We have that knowledge. We have that understanding of where we're, where we're headed.
Yeah, and that is a discrete task. So yeah, that makes sense. Okay. So does that look good then you guys? Are we good on these? Should we move on to economy?
I'm good.
I've got one thing. So for. Are you going to talk about the finances, fiscally responsible manner? You want, I had one comment there is, is. I think we should strive to look to develop a reserve funds. The rainy day fund or whatever with regards to the, the general fund. Have a reserve in there so we can make this period from July to November without having to borrow money.
Brian, would you put that under balanced budget or would you make it its own objective?
I guess it would. It would be its own objective because you, you have to make a concerted effort to, to do that.
Rainy day fund, is that okay? Or reserve? What, what will the public understand best when it goes out to the public?
There's a, there's a budgeting word for it. Bill would know the answer. I, I know it, but I can't remember it right now. Wait, I've got a budget right here.
Is it contingency funds or reserve, established reserves?
No, it's. The contingency, it's. Reserve for future expenditures or something like that.
I'll find the right words with Bill when, and get with Sarah on it.
Sorry, you guys are seeing and the whole world is seeing how bad my spelling really is without spell check and just lost. We'll, we'll fix all that later. Okay, so any other thoughts on any of these before we move on or things to add? Okay, I think I will move us on just because we are pressed for time. Okay, so now we're looking at. Our strong economy goal, let's see how visible this is for you guys. So strong economy goals. So first one, improve the city's economy by focusing on increasing living wage jobs, training and education opportunities for Oak Ridge residents. That one needed to be wordsmith. The second, sustainably develop and market the recreational tourism industry in a way that benefits local businesses and residents. And then improve the city's economy by creating an environment or atmosphere that's open to business. So now you can kind of see how some of those tasks fell under there. So under the first one, grow in existing businesses and recruit new businesses. And then the second one, fill the OIP with businesses that provide living wage jobs. So I'll just show you real quick, some of the tasks that fell under there, the measurable tasks. So they are, they are there, but let's not focus on those. Just so you know that some of those discrete things and we can add new ones. So does that, does seeing the objectives help with thinking around the language on that? Any thoughts? And maybe this one we kind of, I have to open it up because really that third goal did come out of the discussion of this one. Improving the city's economy by creating a friendly or an environment that's open to business. So these are some of the notes that we captured during that discussion.
For the third goal, objective two, that's kind of restating that first goal. So I think maybe getting more specific on. And maybe it's the measurable part, measurable part of it, but you know, how do we create that atmosphere? Unless that's that objective three, you know?
I agree with you, Tricia. Perhaps we get into a little more detail that just. And I like the word atmosphere and not environment. I think Tricia, you suggested that. But you don't have to change it unless everyone wants it, but what I'm.
Leave people to think has to do with the actual real environment, you know?
So, so as far as creating that atmosphere, I think, I think we can, I, I think we need to look outside of the box a little bit. I've been looking at some other communities and the way they, the way they structure their websites and. The information that you can get about business opportunities within your city and economic growth. Be, you know, some of them have some, and it would maybe cost a little bit of money and a little bit of time. But you know, being able to have a packet of information that is online that tells you. What is available in your community, what your community would like to see, or what this community would like to see in additions. These are some of our needs and some of your opportunities. And really having some good, good, healthy, well-done descriptions of what we have, what we need and how to get it. Oh, good job, Dawn. I just read your, your note. So I think, how do we, how do we do that? I think that is a, that would be really strong. Because people now are looking for opportunities to invest money, to move into rural areas, to get away from the big city. And we need to have a billboard and an available document out there and website that says, this is what we have. That's very clear. It doesn't have to be flashy. It doesn't have to be, you know, you know, all this wonderful glitz that you can get. But it, I think we are missing a big piece of marketing ourselves. So maybe it's the marketing. Maybe that's the word I'm looking for. I'm, I'm open to.
I see that John's hand is raised.
Well, and I think we need to look at what are we willing to do to entice. Businesses to come in and establish themselves there. When Walmart distribution center went into. Red Bluff, or actually went into just south of Red Bluff. Because when they came in, uh, they tried to go into the city and they asked the city for some deferment. On property taxes and the city declined. Uh, the county jumped on it. And so they went into the county instead of the city. But what are we willing to do to entice? Uh, businesses to come and establish themselves there, I think that's something we need to examine.
See, I see your hand next.
I just wanted to reiterate and agree with what Kathy said about marketing Oak Ridge to. You know, places that are wanting to open up a new business, I do think that's really important, that's something we're lacking and. That can be on the website, you know, it can be in multiple different ways, but I think that is definitely needs to be one of our objectives.
Sarah, you're muted.
Oh, there we go, okay, so, um, I started to write it down, but then I thought maybe that falls under that business atmosphere, but a couple of things that. I'm, I'm hearing are development, economic development strategy and it's, you know, take time to really do that whole big thinking. And then out of that, a development marketing strategy for Oak Ridge. So, so those, I don't know if those are quite objectives, that are kind of more tasks that you get done once and then you fall through on them, but. Okay, I'm seeing some thumbs ups. So maybe we grab those as tasks and maybe you guys can help me do, do this both go under the open and welcoming atmosphere. Uh, the second objective here, okay, so then, uh, Katie will have those in the notes. And then actually the second one. Um, maybe that flows out of having an economic development strategy. But that would be helpful to have more guidance on that, so then you really know what those ways are that you need to focus on, so. So maybe we leave it for now. I'll, I'll take out the word access. I, one thing though, the community won't see your tasks. Um. And your objectives, so they're just gonna see your goals and your objectives. So I do think that those are both tasks, but maybe there would be some utility in putting in them as objectives, you're getting feedback from the community on those. Thoughts?
So they're gonna see goals. They're not gonna see the objectives?
They will see the objectives, they won't see discrete tasks.
Well. I just, okay, so, so they're gonna be, they're gonna see goals. And with the objective and then they're gonna, we're gonna ask them, will you prioritize these for us? And then you're gonna say, is there anything that you believe is a goal that we should? We should also consider?
Or not just goal, is there, you know, in, for the strategic plan, are there things we should consider? So people might have discrete tasks that they recommend, they might have additional objectives or maybe even wholesale goals.
So how difficult then would it be, I mean, because we're asking them to prioritize, we're not. Asking them to take out the objectives from underneath a goal and put it someplace else, we're asking them to take that whole block and prioritize. So how difficult would it be then to put down some of the tasks that we've listed?
Um, the reason we were thinking not to is just because of keeping it two pages front and back to fit in the mailer, we thought it might be. If a call, logistically that way.
Because I think what you're gonna, if you don't have those tasks in there, what you're gonna get is a lot of individuals saying, well, what about this, what about this, what about this? And it will all have been in there, and what that, for me at least, I think what that does is encourages. Um, it discourages people when they see that. Oh, I would have thought of that if I'd not, if it was listed, I wouldn't have written it down. And then there becomes that possibility that. That when we just. Eventually display what we've come to as an agreement. With their input, they will have totally forgotten what it is and all they'll say is, well, I had ideas, but there wasn't any place to put it.
So maybe you're right Kathy, maybe what we could do is under the objectives have just an example, like in parentheses, you know, example slash and then list them out. So it's, we're not getting exhaustive and asking them to rank all of those, they can just know those are some of the ideas that are getting captured under each objective as discrete tasks.
Right.
And maybe by having them listed and not something people are ranking or voting on, we can squeeze all that into. A paper survey.
If we can do that, I think that would be a, a much more healthy way of presenting it.
Yeah, that's helpful, that's really helpful. Good.
I think Paul had put in a comment in there that. About filling the OIP with businesses that provide living wage jobs. And making them shovel-ready. I don't remember where that goes, but.
Yeah, and so we have that here under the tasks under OIP. Increase number of shovel-ready lots, explore options to add leaseable buildings, work with agency partners to develop an OIP economic development strategy. But maybe the economic development strategy actually pulls out to be a bigger community one. I mean, it's just something that's been talked about in the past.
Yeah, I was actually just gonna ask that, or were we planning on having two separate economic developments?
Yeah, probably not, let's just pull it under here, never get this whole other lane, I think this makes a lot of sense. And agency partners, I was thinking whether there might be support through like a business organ, organ solutions. SBDC, who knows? If, if there could be support for that, there might not be, it might cost you some money.
Um, so how detailed are we getting in this, I mean, um. You know, if I say, like, well, you know, the community at one, the community or the council at one point had talked about putting in a. A, uh, a no facilities, a dry tent camping area. For bikers and hikers and that type of thing, and we also discussed. How do we, um, centralize our services into a community center? This isn't where you want that, do, is this, you know, I'm asking. Um, those are still things that are floating around, we haven't really addressed them, but we need to. Um, what do we do with them, what do we do with the WAC? I mean, is that, this is for future discussions. As it pertains to economics, I'm assuming.
So, yeah, actually, we haven't talked about the recreation one, um, we did capture the WAC stuff in community livability. Um, but, uh, and maybe we should, we should look at this tourist, um, discussion. And this is something I pulled over from other plans, I wanted to explain this to you guys on this discussion is. So sustainably develop and market the recreation tourism industry in a way that benefits local businesses and residents. So benefiting the local business and residents add-on is really driving at promoting the type of, um, tourism industry that doesn't make. Oak Ridge a place that's where people can't afford to live and work.
Right.
Uh, but that doesn't preclude working with your businesses like, like your cogwields that do come out of town, but provide a really needed service, it's not saying you don't want those. But it's really trying to build out those, uh, other, uh, amenities and services we don't have. But that's my wording, so I wanted to bring, bring that to your attention, you can definitely take that out. So, and I'll just go ahead and show you those tasks. So the objectives that, um, came from your discussion were develop tourist amenities and services in collaboration with businesses and partners. And then work with recreation businesses and partners to extend the tourism season. So those are those, I guess I can't get up all in that once.
Sarah, where did, and I don't mean to, to yell squirrel here, but where did the, um, uh, housing go?
Housing went into live, a community livability.
Okay, got it.
Though it does definitely have economic, you know, ties.
Yes, it does. I think, you know. So do we, so then I go back to my question, are we, do we add details into here, do we put in here, explore the possibility of a dry tent camp? Of, of a dry camp, do we put in here, it's, you know, explore the possibility of, I don't know, you know?
If it's a, if it's a task, because I think that would be a task, um, that you really do want to invest time in. Um, or want to encourage your partners to invest some time into looking into, and the city would support it in some way, then I'd say you add it in here.
So because this is, and I'm probably answering my own question, because this is a living document and we're gonna go back to it all the time. Um, this is something that as, as we move through council meetings, any counselor or mayor or city administrator can say. Hey, I have, I have a goal that I want everybody to consider. Or objective that I would like us to consider. And, and in discuss adding that in.
Absolutely, or not even adding in, just acting on it, so say if somebody comes to council and they say, hey, we want to have a, a, you know, or develop a, a camp site. And we'd also like to do it on city property, you could come back to these goals and objectives and say, well, does this fit in what we want to spend our time and energy on? Or tell, or ask our staff to spend time or energy on, and if it fits, then yes, you move forward on it.
Okay, okay.
So it's not like, this is everything that's gonna get done in five years, this is just saying, I mean, these are the areas you wanna. To, uh, to focus your time and energy.
Okay, thank you for helping me clarify that in my head.
So I guess I won't add it in for now, but any other thoughts then from folks, or should we move on? Actually, we, we're one minute away from break, so maybe this is a good time to break. Um, you can take a look at this, I'll leave it up, you can look at it during break if you have any additional thoughts. And then we'll come back and go through community livability, and actually, we did gain back some time, so, good. Um. Uh, and that'll give us time to talk about things in closing, so, okay, great. Okay, so let's take a 15-minute break and come back at 2 o'clock. Thanks everyone, and thanks for all the discussion. Hi, everybody. We're getting ready to get started again. I know I went outside for half a second. It's really tempting to stay out there, so. But thank you for coming back and joining us.
It is beautiful outside. I wandered around and checked the flower gardens to make sure they weren't drying, hoping one of them would be screaming and yelling for water. And I could run in and say, I'm sorry, I have to go. Emergency.
Okay, well, I think we're right at two right now. I think folks are getting back online. I do want to give a minute here. I did leave a screen up. I actually moved up a couple of the objectives because we weren't hearing specific language around partnering under the third goal. And we do have partnering tasks throughout here. But I just wanted to see if there was any thoughts before we move on to talking about community livability. If not, then you guys will get time to think about this again when you see it come out in survey. So go to community livability. And so here's the objectives that came up with community livability. Is it helpful for you guys to see the tasks or not? Okay, I'm seeing Kathy say, yes, that is helpful. So I will go ahead and open these up. Okay, so we don't have a lot of them here. I wonder if I can. See, can get a little bit higher here. Okay, so our three goals are work with community partners to provide recreation, education, enrichment opportunities for citizens and youth. The second, find creative ways to work with public and private partners to increase access to housing. And last, seek opportunities for revitalized cities, business corridors, neighborhoods, and provide safe and beautiful places to live and work. So first with first objective under the first goal is maintain and improve infrastructure and facilities that enhance the quality of life for residents. We don't have specific tasks under there right now. But yeah, this language did come up during your discussions. And I don't feel like we necessarily needed to build out tasks. But I just want to make sure that that resonates with an objective under this. And then second, is support efforts to increase quality childcare and before and after school programs.
So Sarah, for number one, objective one in their measurable task, is that kind of where we we put down, you know, look at providing a community center?
Yeah.
To coalesce all of our services?
Yeah, actually, I think that might have been under there. And I'm looking at, I'm like, you're right, community center was here. We have been working a couple of different things. I wonder if we lost that, so. I do think that would be here.
I wonder if the INI should also be under there as a measurable task.
Will you remind me, Don, what INI stands for?
Infiltration and infrastructure. It's the sewer system needs to be updated. It's infiltration and inflow.
Inflow, okay.
Is that already captured under the infrastructure task on responsive government? There is a water and wastewater improvement task on there.
And I think we might have captured it under there.
Okay.
Okay.
In the discussion that went around around community center, this might have been why I took where where this one got deleted, Kathy. But there was a question that happened around that. And so it's more than just community center of community event center. It's community services center, right?
Yes.
Okay, should I add that word in there then to make it clear?
Well, I suppose, because it really, the discussion was, you know, is this a community event center? Is this a community services center? You know, we we kind of didn't, we've thrown them both around, but we haven't decided which way it should go. Other than I think there is a general, general agreement that we do need a services center, whether that is also included as an event center. You know, or not, could it be that same thing? You know, so whatever, you did a good job, Sarah. Leave it the way it is.
I see Bobby's hand is up.
So as you talk about a community services center, a community center, I think we need a community center that encompasses all of that because we really don't have a huge amount of community services that would house that. Because a lot of them have moved to making people go to Eugene. So for example, the three big ones that I can think of would be my agency, which is senior disability services. And then you have DHS. And then maybe women's space. You know, and then like, once every three months, we have WIC that will come up and use the room. But it's just, I think having a community center is a better goal because it's going to meet more needs for people. Because it's a place where you can have events and you can have some of those services house. But you can also open it up to other things. Maybe it could also include a very small business incubator or other things that residents needs. Who knows what it would look like? But I think I am more leaning towards a community center.
Okay, Don's hand is up? Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out when when the council went through this whole process for any community center, we learned from the planner that we had hired on that that outside funding really is not available for event centers, but it is for community services. So we were leaning towards services.
Yeah, so I just put in parentheses, services and events, which I think is good direction to whoever ends up working on this, to be able to think towards both. But by not indicating, then it really could leave it open to interpretation.
Right. Good. That's good. I think another thing that could be put in here as a task if we're going to get our objective or whatever it is tasks, if we're going to get specific, is is pursuing LCC pilot, pilot classes out here, whether they're online in a regular space. So that would be like in our community center if we had a space to do that. But adult learning through LCC.
You know, I was thinking about that kind of in the back of my mind under our strong economy where we put education up here in the first one. About when we used to have the LCC extension center. Maybe it fits under that because it really is about workforce training with LCC. But maybe we capture it there.
So you called it an LCC extension center. That makes, those are good words.
Yeah, we used to have one. And there might very possibly be the opportunities like that will reoccur because of coronavirus and the changing economy. But maybe that's captured.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, it seems like there's not any, anyone thinking these objectives don't make sense for the first goal. So maybe we'll move on to the second one, which is find creative ways to work with public and private partners to increase access to housing. So the two are explore options for workforce housing. And I pulled this one under identify city-owned properties that can be used or converted to residential use. I actually pulled that apart and put that both under that and under revitalization. Boy, I think some of our tasks disappeared. Huh. Well, anyways, that's for workforce housing, that could be one option. But then also working with agencies and nonprofits to increase options for affordable housing for vulnerable residents. They're kind of two different things. So I separate those objectives, but I want to double check them with you.
No, I think that's good to separate them. So under that should also be like the a short term housing policy.
Where would you put that one or one objective?
What objective? Oh, which which one? You mean one or two? I would put it under one. Well, that's not necessarily workforce housing, but that is housing because that is, that is what contributes to a housing shortage here.
Yeah, absolutely. I think that's fair to leave that there. And it is just a task. It'll get done once, so.
Right. And also, I'm trying to think of a word. It goes along with code enforcement. But when you, when you take a house and you say it's no longer inhabitable, I can't think of a word.
Oh, condemn condemning houses?
Condemnation, yeah, condemnation of unusable housing. We need to pursue that, too.
Yeah. Well, I wonder, we should just make another policy type. Housing review, housing infrastructure and needs. Just me thinking out loud.
Tresha, I see your hand.
Kathy saying that made me think back to a conversation that we had as a council about the zombie houses. And I don't know if it would be in community livability or if it would be. I think it would have been.
Gender audiences, too.
Yeah. I think, I don't know necessarily, that might be a discrete task of, you know, getting an inventory of those houses and whatnot.
I think that goes hand in hand with condemnation and and code enforcement. Because so many of those houses either are one, unoccupied and being occupied occupied by residents, abate. Oh, thanks, Kevin, abate. You know, to be able to to say, you know, you're not supposed to be here in the first place. Or this house is condemned. And there are these many code violations can help take care of some of those problems. But we definitely need to go through and identify. The other thing I was thinking of was there are, there are some communities that that encourage unused housing to be used. So, you know, we have, we have several landlords in Oak Ridge who have several pieces of property that they just don't rent out. You know, and I'd like to pursue what kind of options municipalities have to encourage use of homes that are available and explore those options. What kind of, like, that's a good word, incentives. What kind of incentives could we give to them to get them back on the market or be rented? We just, we're just, we're missing out on opportunities if we don't find out if there's something we can do about that.
Yeah, vacancy tax.
There's a vacancy tax. There you go.
Well, let's leave that under incentives. You guys know what incentives mean. That'd be a reverse incentive.
Reverse incentive.
I'm curious, the condemn slash abate vacant properties, if that would be more of that public safety aspect versus like housing? Because I don't know. I guess I just don't have enough background information in real estate of what happens what we, once we condemn and abate those vacant houses, like what happens with that property? Because it's, I don't feel like it's something that we could clean up to then turn around for public housing or, you know, whatever it is.
I don't think as a city we can do that. But I think that there is an opportunity there when we identify a property that is, you know, it could be condemned, should be condemned. You know, I know there's a legal process that you have to go through. But at that point, with some creative thinking, perhaps the cities could say, let me work with you. What, how can I partner with you to help you out of the situation you're in and benefit the community as well? So I think exploring that, so maybe it belongs under both. Because I see how that goes under livability. Or safety, rather, is what it's.
I think it's the lens you want to look at, look through it. If you're concerned because of the the safety nuisance aspect and you put it under safety, you're concerned because these lots aren't being further developed, then I think you go under here. So I think it can go either way.
John, I see your hand up.
Have to get to the mute unmute. Are we really looking to just?
Are we really looking to just focus this just on housing? Or are you looking to focus this on all those kinds of vacant and condemned or condemnable properties? And, and my thought is, is, you know, some of the commercial buildings that are in disrepair and um, some of them that should be just brought down that are still standing. I, I think it would behoove the, the city to, I mean, I would rather see a vacant lot than a dilapidated building that is now a, a haven for rodents and, um, and whatever else. And so maybe we, I don't know where it would fit. I don't know if we needed it in a different spot, but if we had the same kind of philosophy that you're developing here towards housing developed towards all properties, uh, housing and commercial.
So I remember John, what I did here is I pulled those two things apart and I put this utilize vacant lots and spaces objective under beautification. Um, so some of it could be for housing, but other of it is just to, you know, deal with the derelict properties and what they mean for neighborhoods right now, or our city corridors, um, with them being in that state. Um, I think having maybe those tasks and similar tasks under that one might be good, but again, different lens. Does that kind of capture it?
Well, I mean, to me it's a vacant lot, not in spaces doesn't say dilapidated, falling down, commercial building that should become a vacant law. I, I guess.
So yeah, I could definitely, if we want to move to that one, I can, we can reword that. Um, but yeah, it had came up in both together in the same conversation around housing, but it does lend itself to that beautification, uh, goal as well.
I'm wondering if since under the, um, objective three of the second goal, that it's, uh, condemnative at vacant properties. If we just put utilize vacant properties instead of lots, that might clarify that it would not just be the lots, but also the properties that are not being put to use. Um, also Bobby, I'm not sure if your hand went down and up again.
I did. Um, so we're talking about condemning properties and I know that it's very expensive to condemn properties. And do we really have the money to do that over the next five years? So I really think it, it might be smarter to keep the word condemn out of, out of this discussion. And then just work with property owners and properties that are bank owned, make the banks do something if we can.
I, I think it's fair to leave the condemnation in there. It doesn't mean that we're going to go through the process. But it does, does kind of give you some leverage when you speak to someone and say, you know, technically your house should be condemned. I don't want to do that and we don't want to go that route because it's expensive for you.
I don't know, but it doesn't matter.
Bobby, I tried to capture that under the object, the third objective on the third goal. But would, were you saying that would also be under this for the housing one as well? I mean, I think it's maybe good to just add it in there too. And then you guys can decide. So are you guys seeing these real, these changes in real time? I see back to you guys. Sorry, that's kind of small. Cause that, that's kind of two different tasks. Um, and I, I think Bobby's right. You guys probably should not be putting tasks in here. You know, you cannot get to. But, uh, but yeah, I think it's worth capturing for sure.
Well, and that's, that would always be the preference. I mean, nobody would want to condemn it and nobody wants to really tear anything down. It doesn't have to be, if it can be rehabbed. Uh, it, it's working with the owners to find whatever motivation to get them to rehab it and, and get it occupied, be it, uh, housing or commercial.
So I have, um, a comment and I, I want to be very politically correct with it. So in my work, I see a lot of families and a lot of people, and a lot of these people own these homes that, um, probably should be condemned. And they really don't have the resources to do the abatements or to, to go out and make all the improvements that we're asking. And I think I'm, I'm really struggling with this because we, I feel like we're kind of creating this hammer that we want to put out there for people to make them clean up their properties. But we're not, um, also giving people resources and, and helping them find, find avenues and ways to make those changes or improvements. And that's where that working with partners comes in as a city and knowing who our partners are, such as Homes for Good or other agencies that might be able to help people with that and getting them connected to those places. Um, so I, I'm just really struggling with how strong some of this language is to our community as a whole. While I understand it's important and I agree and I don't like seeing them and I would like to see it all cleaned up. I just, I'm just, I'm really struggling.
So Bobby, I think that's a good point. And I think maybe a way that we could word this with a condemn and abate is condemn and abate vacant properties of absentee landowners. So it's those landowners that live in another state have property here that they're not doing anything with, really trying to, to work with them to use, find alternative use, sell their property, or if they're not going to get it fixed up and cleaned, then to do that, would that meet? Kind of meet both?
Yeah. 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 I think vacant properties, definitely. Um, I mean, we do have some where people live there and something needs done, but.
I, I, this Chrissy, I have to say, I, um, absolutely agree with what Bobby's saying and I see the exact same thing. We have such a broad array of people and, um, I would prefer to see words like, you know, incentivize and encourage and things like that. Getting, um, people to use those programs and working with them versus the words condemn.
Okay, I can see that too. Um, so I, I disagree with this whole absentee landowners, but I agree with what Chrissy just said is so. So work for a different way to say that. Don't, you, you don't have to use condemn and abate. But I think the, the focus should be on, on, on identifying properties, um, that need to be brought up to code and assist the owners to make that happen. And then the next result, if that doesn't happen, which doesn't have to be there, then you take, you take action if the home becomes unlivable. I mean, we have an obligation as a city not to have people living in houses that are unlivable and unsafe. And that's okay to say, but at the same time, you know, Bobby, the softer general side that says, yeah, they are. But how do we help them stay in their homes? So Chrissy's suggestion on changing the wording is, is spot on. And I'm happy with leaving out condemn and abate, but I also just don't want to focus on absentee owners. Um, if you are an owner of a property, regardless of the situation you're in, that doesn't change your responsibility. It may change your ability, you may not have the ability to, to meet those responsibilities. And that's where we come in is can we help you?
See Trisha's hand.
I'm wondering if that would even fall under this goal then, if, if the intent is to increase access to housing. Um, having people bring their house up to code does not create more access.
So it does. Um, I mean landlords not illegally should not be renting homes that are, do not meet codes and are not livable.
Okay.
Doesn't mean it doesn't happen, but yeah, there are, there, there's definitely statutes around what is required for a home to be livable.
So maybe there needs to be something in all this that talks about, um, finding partners that can assist these people, you know, like Habitat for Humanity or for whatever in, um, making these repairs affordable for those that are economically challenged.
Yeah, and Homes for Good is a lot here too as well. But yeah, seeking out those partnerships would be good as a task.
Yes, we're just focusing here on houses, but we also got businesses that we need to look into too.
Yeah. So, um, Paul, I think that comes under our, uh, and this is community livability, but looking, looking at businesses that need that kind of assistance. That would be then they're that revitalizing business corridors. Absolutely. Um, so are you saying we should be looking for like the partners that can help businesses do revitalization or improvements?
Well, you know, a lot of it is, there's been a, I mean, I've been here like 20 years and some of the buildings been vacant for 20 years since I've been here, you know? Nobody's doing nothing with them. But I would say, yes, we, we need to find whatever resources for, uh, commercial buildings as well to help them be rehabbed.
I don't know why the font's so big on some of these.
I just want to double check. I think Dawn and Bobby, both of your hands have been up for a bit. And I just wanted to be sure that those were still up from previous comments or if you had re-raised your hand.
Um, I just, yeah, I, I appreciate all the talk around this. But I just know the resources, there aren't a lot of resources. And I think going back to that partnering with other agencies, because I found in my work that as I partner with one or two agencies, I learn of more places and more little unknown, um, services that are available to people. And I think just, um, knowing who they are and developing and fostering those relationships is going to be really important to us being able to help our communities, our, our community. And then also knowing what we can do to encourage some of those partners to really come in and be willing to help us. Um, you know, what are some of the barriers that they see in Oak Ridge that would stop them from coming here? And, um, funding some different projects for some of our homeowners or property owners. So, um, I just would really like to see us work on a goal that, that's around fostering those relationships, not just, knowing who's there. And so.
I, I think that's a good point, Bobby. I'm trying to think of where to fit that under, um, would it be under housing stock current future needs? So foster relationships.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not quite sure. So, um, and I'm just going to throw an example out there so that you know, it's kind of where I'm coming from. So for example, one of the programs that I do is called Options Counseling. And it's not, when you think of options counseling, you think of like what's at St. Benny's upstairs, you know, where there's some options counselor there. But it's a different federal program and it's where we meet with people. And, um, we go over just some decision-making processes and identify goals and tasks and, and work together to help them. And I really, and then, um, the people reach out and as they identify things that they need, my consumers will reach out to whoever it is they need to work with to set those up. And then I'll kind of stand back and just kind of help, um, support them in that and help them hopefully reach those tasks and goals. And so in doing that, I learned about a lot of different agencies and programs that aren't just in Oak Ridge and different things that are out there as we continue to reach out for things. And, and I really think, um, a lot of our constituents that live here kind of follow that category. They don't really know what's out there. Um, we don't necessarily know everything that's out there, but helping, um, move them forward and, and not just coming down with a hammer and saying, we're going to condemn your property or, um, you know, you're going to be ticketed, you're going to be fined, just finding ways to better help people. Is beneficial because we do, we have a lot of different people in, in our community and, um, I just, in my job, I just, I really see a lot of the barriers that people face. And, and it isn't just economics, you know, it's understanding and having the ability to reach out and work with those agencies and programs. Cause some people just don't have, um, what it takes to do that and not due to no fault of their own, it's just their situation. So.
Yeah. So Bobby, I just pulled that up into working with agencies and nonprofits to increase options for affordable housing for residents. Cause I really feel like that's the lane it falls under where you're going to find the funding. For residents, um, and maybe it's something along the line of finding affordable housing ambassadors that, uh, know, know this stuff and know where to point people. And so it's a little bit of it is, is, is the who, you know, how, how that gets done, who the who is. Um, cause this housing issue, it's a sticky issue for every community right now. And it's going to look like it's only getting worse. So, um, I think you're, you're right, not.
I, I want to point out at this point, cause Bobby, you know, Bobby's embedded in this stuff. And so her perspective is really important. But I also want to point out to council and to community members that a lot of the ways we find out, like Bobby finds out more information is being embedded in it. And there are lots of opportunities for council members as well as community members to participate in, in, um, in groups and meetings and, um, and coalitions throughout the county, um, who, who are trying to come up with it. And, um, we don't have to try to solve this all ourselves. Sometimes getting out there and putting yourself, um, in a situation where you can learn more about it and getting that visibility um, for Oak Ridge and, um, at the same time, educating yourself about what we can do is as important. And so part of these goals or these objectives for me is also to identify how we, how we as council members can participate in activities outside of our, our city that will help us acquire some of the, the funds and tools for our city. You know, so that's part and parcel of this. This is, you know, this is really great stuff, but it, it has a lot of ramifications.
And it's a lot of work. Um, and so that's where I'm thinking maybe on that second one, we need to add in there community members, agencies and nonprofits. Cause it really can be, um, community members that can lead with that too. Like maybe there does need to be a, a housing task force at some point, meet up of huge community members. Is that okay?
No, I agree with that totally. I know, um, Bob Obermeyer and I have sat on the St. Benny's Housing Task Force. And, um, you know, there's much more we could do. Um, and they're kind of in the limbo right now with, with, uh, COVID. But, um, there is much more we could do and much more that we could participate in.
Okay. I feel like we have a lot here under housing, um, that, you know, gets the, and I think objectives are capturing it. So to not get too far in the weeds, let's move on to that last one. So we can stay on track with time. Um, and we already did start to shift some stuff over, um, but seek opportunities to revitalize cities, business corridors and neighborhoods. Provide safe and beautiful places to live and work. So this was both about the High 58 and uptown stuff that we saw in the, the derelict neighborhoods. I actually added in parks because, um, I was on that, I participated in that public process around the parks OIP or the OIP parks plan, which is now done. Um, and that would go towards, um, the beautiful places to live or work. Um, and I didn't see parks come anywhere else, but I wanted to point out that was mine and make that, make sure that's okay with you guys. And it makes sense and is a priority.
I, I think the parks are totally appropriate to be there.
I'm seeing three yes votes also.
I would also be curious, maybe adding in the language, um, to provide safe and beautiful places to live, work and recreate, but maybe it doesn't need to be in there. Maybe, maybe live covers that, you know?
We do have recreate over here, kind of in that family's lane on the first one. Um, though I, we definitely could add it in there. Cause yeah, just even taking a, a walk on a trail is recreating. So.
Yeah, I feel like it could live, that parks one could live under that first or that third one, whatever makes sense.
Or I could add the word in whatever you guys want me to do. You're driving, I'm just writing.
So one of the things that I'm kind of curious about, and I don't know if that's too much detailed here, but when we talk about parks, we have a lot of nice parks here. And, um, and as we move, uh, hopefully move into the point where we can do something, some meetings that aren't, aren't zoomed. Um, in the future, I guess, as we talk about this, I would really like to see us start, start, um, in the future, I guess, as we talk about this, I would really like to see us start, start, I keep seeing the word objective in front of me, I gotta close my eyes, specifically targeting a, a park at a time to perhaps have our, like, council meeting app and, and have our council meeting outside at a park and target that. I mean, as a council, we could, we can highlight areas of our community by doing things like that. Or, you know, maybe highlight it in the, in a water bill newsletter or whatever. Because I, our parks are really, you know, we all agree that they're really important, but there's still members of our community who don't know, you know, where, what is that park down by the river, you know, what is that park over there? Oh, we have a pump track? Where's the pump track? What is a pump track? You know, all these things that, that add to the livability of our community that we don't, we don't toot our own horn enough, I don't think.
Kathy, do you have any language for me around that objective around parks?
Sarah, that was probably the nicest worded, what the heck did you just say, Kathy?
I understand what you're saying. I just don't know, you know, we gotta have an objective there. I put a placeholder in, because I was just wondering if I was, yeah.
I think for me, the objective is, is to showcase the positive perks that we have. What'd you say?
Market or perks.
Market or perks.
Should I add in there, continue, continue to improve? Because like now we have the up and coming disc golf in.
And so talk about livability, community livability. And I don't know whether this is actually a feasible goal, because I'm not sure that you can, you can then measure it. But, but I think it should be a goal of the council to create and foster positive conversations about our community. Now, I get that I can't quantify that or send, I know, and John's laughing, he is laughing back there. But I, I do think that is a goal, and whether that turns out to be a value for the council, I just think it is, it should be said as much as it should be said that we need to support our city staff. It is the obligation of council to create positive conversations in our community. And however you put that, it's fine with me.
I almost want to add in the word, like, associations. When people think of Oak Ridge, they think of positive things. But I don't know if that would, people would read that more like organizations.
That's a good point, though, because, you know, it's like keeping, keeping us out of the news, the bad news is really important.
I'm going to just put it in parentheses and think about the wording. I, I'm putting it here because I think this falls under enrichment opportunities, maybe cultural opportunities. Like it's part of the culture of Oak Ridge, maybe the word culture should even come up here, but uh, oh, maybe it's foster positive, positive conversations and culture within Oak Ridge.
Okay.
Trish, I see you've got your hand raised.
Um, so for goal three, seek opportunities to revitalize the city's business corridors and neighborhoods, provide safe and beautiful workplaces to live and work. That objective number one is just a little bit redundant, so I don't know if there's something that we could change between that goal versus the objective. Maybe it's just provide safe and beautiful places to live and work. I don't know if that's too narrow, but.
Oh, yeah.
Good point.
I kind of had another thought. My brain is just starting to really slow down today. But I do think maybe that foster positive conversations, or, or, you know, like, culture within Oak Ridge could also fall into that. Provide safe and beautiful places to, to live and work, but maybe it doesn't. I, yeah, again, brain is fried.
So one thing I, I, when I was parsing these out and going through the notes of your discussion, I added the word beauty in here with business, because it was revitalized business corridors, but I added in beautiful. Because I think that's, you know, important is, is that, you know, it's not just that a place is functioning. Part of what builds placemaking is having, you know, aesthetic to it, right? So that's what's different, Trish, about that, but I don't know if I'm quite, you know, getting at it right there. And then I guess we don't have it around the other livability objectives and neighborhoods. But, and this could almost come over, but that third goal, as I was writing out, is really more of those tasks around how to manage properties is how I was building out that one. But yeah, my brain's slowing down now too.
Yeah, I think there's so many different ways that we could plug and play and move stuff around. So, you know, it's, it's all stuff that I can live with and I'm, I'm not going to lose sleep over.
And that can be edited in the next six weeks. So I think that's something is, as everybody comes back to this fresh eyes, there might be like ahas that come out of this, for sure. Yeah, any other thoughts then, you guys? We still have, we're, we're down to where we need to be talking about next steps. We probably could spend another five minutes on this or any of the other goals and objectives.
I have a quick thought on the one that you just clicked on, as a measurable task for that continuing to improve the market city parks. I'm positive that, that the Parks Committee has been working on this a little bit, but it might be good just to list that out as, you know, leveraging community and Parks Committee, again, brain not working, to work on some of, you know, what that would look like for, for improving and, and marketing those parks.
And can I add in here grant opportunities? I know that there's been several grants that have been achieved and a lot of this will happen through grants. So, so leverage community partners, because that's who your volunteers are. I just changed that a little bit, Trish. Does that still get at it?
I think so. I, I mean, I'm trying to imagine the next city council coming in and using this. And, you know, I don't doubt that they're not going to be aware of our city committees, but I think wherever we can kind of outline that we should be using our committees and that they should be high functioning. And, because I think sometimes it's easy to move forward with tasks without really saying, hey, oh, maybe, you know, instead of us taking this on our shoulders, we could push it out to our committees. But at the same time, I fully acknowledge that our, our committees could be functioning at a higher level. And so in many ways, if you send something down to a committee and it, it sits there for six months, it's really hard to have confidence that, that, yeah.
Well, and actually, so this is one of the things we didn't really have time to get to today, but our intention in building out this plan is every single one of these objectives and maybe even some of the tasks would have the who and what they'd do, which would be the task, but the who and the when assigned to it. Yeah, which might actually turn into homework for you guys. But we, we talked about trying to capture all that today too, but we just didn't think we could move through the material fast enough, so. Bobby?
Hopefully we don't catch my kids arguing in the background. So I think it's important as we talk about the committees that we have. And I think we need to really look at empowering them to feel that they can do more. Because I don't know that they all feel that way, that they have that ability and that power to make decisions and, and do some of these things. So I think empowering them is another good word or some thought to put into this.
Yeah, Bobby, that takes me back to the responsive government and using volunteer time wisely. We didn't get to the tasks on that one, but maybe I'll just capture it there for right now. Or maybe Katie, you can, as, as that seems like that's where that would fall under is, is effectively using and empowering city committees.
Well, and a quick thought on that, really quick, something that I've noticed, it's, makes city committees really difficult is this kind of like lack, lack of experience. And I think about it with going into the Administrative Advisory Committee and facilitating that committee. I have facilitation experience. And so for me, it was, it, it was a little bit easier for me to get up to speed. But I think that's where, again, using that time wisely, some of those measurable tasks would be setting up facilitation trainings, however minor they might be, but something we could talk about later.
Yeah, I think Katie can grab that for the notes, but that seems, that, that would definitely fall under using volunteer time wisely is running the trainings that help them be effective.
Absolutely.
Okay, well, I think we've basically dumped everybody's brain out into this spreadsheet today. Thank you for, for all of your time and energy. And I think what we need to talk about before we close this workshop is kind of our next steps, which are, all of this is going to get converted into a survey that will get out across multiple platforms. We will need to turn it around pretty quick, because we want to make the mailer next week. So on that note, Kathy, we will try to get the tasks in there, or maybe it'll just be, you know, example of one or two tasks under each objective. We'll see how things start to fit on the page for the survey. I think online we'd have a little more flexibility with that. But then that will be out for probably about four or five weeks. And then I suggest that we reconvene in September. We might be able to do it in the evening. But I imagine before then, we might have some homework for you guys. So then we can send you everything beforehand. So you can come red in with final thoughts and, and prioritizing. So it would be ideal if we can prioritize goals, if that makes sense, but definitely objectives. So you really know where you want to invest the capacity that you have in, in each area, so.
So along with what you just said, as far as what our next steps are, and creating a survey, I'd also ask that you work with, with Brian or me or council or whatever to, to create talking points for this, as well as a press release. That way we have all, we're all talking the same language, explaining what this is and why this is and how to access it. And that we all are provided as council, we're all provided a, a nice little white paper or one sheet that just says, this is how I tell people where to go, this is where it's going to be advertised, this is where it's available and how it's going to be compiled and when you'll see results from this, and the purpose, of course.
You're, you're preempting your communication strategy.
Sarah, will there be a chance for council to see the survey before it hits whatever avenue it's going through?
That's a good question, Chrissy. I think we have to have it by the beginning of the month for, for, so that would be time, but that might mean we need to have it by the end of next week. So Brian, can you help answer that question? Maybe?
Yes. So, yeah, you're going to need it by the first, so we would have to have it all wrapped up by next week, into next week.
Is this something that you can send out to council and we can submit back? Or is this something like what Kathy was saying, where we could kind of meet as a subcommittee and go over it before it goes out?
I think what makes sense is that we send you guys the digital survey, so you can go through that and then know that our paper survey will reflect that. So you'll at least get to see. It's just, it's going to be what you see here. It'll be this language here, asking people prioritize or rank importance on a one to five scale.
I, I think what's, what Chrissy is really asking is, are we going to be able to have input into the survey if we, that we think is?
Exactly.
And, and given the timeline, you know, and, and we all realize that you, you are working under a deadline. I think it would be fair to be able to say, can you please give us at least, you know, 24 hours of their service of what it looks like? And as a council, we will commit to, to not insisting on changes that are, that are minutia. That we will only look at the very big picture and try very hard not to make any changes to it unless it is absolutely unlivable for you.
I would agree to that.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm just, I'm not thinking too that this will be too in-depth, you guys, I think it's going to be these, rank them, and do you have more to add and space to add? There'll be any questions that aren't, that, that aren't this language, unless I'm missing something.
Imagine that there wouldn't be, but you know, I think it's, I think it's healthy for council to have a little bit of a pre-see of it and at least the ability to wave a red flag if something seems totally missed. But we promise not to be, you know, horrible editors.
Yeah, for some reason, I was thinking the first was on Thursday. The first isn't till next Saturday. So we have, we'll have all next week. So we should be able to get you a copy by Tuesday or Thursday, at least a digital copy to come through. And then if you get back to us by Friday, we'll easily have that on Monday for the water bill to be printed. Unless, unless Brian, you're thinking the water bill printing would happen next week.
No, I don't, I don't see the word will be imprinted and sent on Monday, so the weekend as well.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
And then do we want to, September's a long ways out there, and there's so many things that can change from now and then, especially the current virus. Maybe we'll, maybe in a couple of weeks here, float a doodle poll or something. Brian, I, I'll defer to you on that unless you want to pin something down now.
No, we'll, we'll hammer out a date later.
Okay.
And then I think for you guys to know, I believe that we have to have the report done October 31st per the grant. So the intent would be get all the material back from the public, incorporate suggestions, run it through you guys, and then that would leave us sometime in September, and then that would leave us, you know, six weeks to draft, which is more than enough. But I don't really want to leave us less than four.
How is that going to, I mean, if you're going to leave it out to the survey out there for four to five weeks, you said?
Yeah, but time people get their mail, their bill. Oh, I think, I think what, when the mailings go out, then we're looking four to five weeks. And then us reconvene in about five weeks.
Okay, and then you, if this done by October 31st, okay, got it.
Yep. So if we can meet somewhere between the middle of September and the end of September, that leaves us plenty of time for drafting.
Excellent, okay.
Any questions? Okay, well, it won't make us sit here the last nine minutes.
But thank you, Sarah, and, and your team for putting this together, for working so hard and diligently, for turning around the information and, and encouraging us to just do a brain dump and, and really figure out what it is that we, we want as priorities for our community. So thank you so much for doing this. And thank you, Brian and staff, for putting up with, with councils' meanderings here. And, and I know it's been rough.
We really appreciate all your time, you guys. There's a lot of time, both staff and volunteers on a weekend, so we're happy to do it. It's exciting that we're, we're making some progress. Everybody stay cool tomorrow. And I guess any last comments or questions from anyone before we hang up here?
None from me.
Thank you, Sarah.
Great. We'll keep, keep an eye on the email next week for the survey and, and talking points and, and instructions. We'll get that stuff out probably by the end of next week soon.
And I'm really impressed with Brian's colorful shirt.
Hold it out on San Diego days.
Sorry. To clarify, Sarah, we are not meant to take the survey. We will do our own ranking once we get community feedback.
Yeah, I think that just makes more sense. And I think we might actually give you guys a little more homework than just the survey. So unless you want extra work. Okay, we'll, we'll have, we'll have better instructions next week.
But, but staff should take the survey, not just, yeah, staff should, council should not.
Okay.
Thanks to Brian. That's good.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, everyone.
Bye.